Good evening, everyone. This is the time and place set for the April 2022 Regular Planning Commission meeting for the City of Royal Oak. Welcome. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to start by introducing the commissioners. Why don't we start with Ms. Beeky down there? Come this way. Please introduce yourself to the folks.
I'm Anne Beeky.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Aaron Leal, City Attorney.
Woody Grantino.
Eric Klooster.
Paul Curtis.
All right, and I'm Gary Casada. I'm the chairperson. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the February 8th.
March.
March, March meeting, sorry. Have the commissioners had a chance to look at these? Are there questions, changes, or a motion? Anyone with a comment? Mr. Klooster.
I will move to approve the minutes.
It's like a second. Here's a second, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, just call for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, say nay. Okay, seeing none, motion passes. The meeting minutes are approved. All right. Next thing on the agenda, although it's not on here, does anybody on the commission have anything to add to the agenda today that they would wish to add? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Next item is public comment on non-agenda items. So there's four items on the agenda tonight. If you want to speak on something that is not one of those four items, this is the time that you can come up and comment. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close that, the public comment on non-agenda items. That brings us to the first item of new business. This is a public hearing on a site plan for an amendment to a final PUD site plan. This is SP 22-04-05, and I'd ask Mr. Twain to give us a preview.
Certainly. Planning Commission members hopefully have had an opportunity to review the staff report. That report does give you some background and history on the planned unit development for this site that encompasses several parcels and several buildings on the northeast corner of North Main Street and East 11 Mile Road. I won't go through the history. It is in there in the packet in terms of what was originally approved in terms of the redevelopment site under the PUD and then the subsequent amendments that have occurred since that time. What's in front of you this evening is a proposed amendment to the PUD, to that site plan. It involves the area that currently occupied by the Main Art Theater and some associated parking, surface parking around that area, as well as some adjacent parcel area, a land area. The petitioner is proposing to construct a five-story building. It is approximately 71 feet in height to the roof line. It would include commercial tenant space on the first floor, approximately 4,600 square feet of retail space, as well as 4,670 of proposed restaurant space. Additional on the second level would be office, as proposed is 31,680 square feet. Above that, on floors three, four, and five, it is proposed that there be 17 units per floor. One correction in the staff report on the narrative, it said 54. Technically, it should be 51. In the subsequent parking chart, so you'll see it is listed as 51, just a typo on page five of the report. In addition, there will also be additional parking on the ground level. 56 spaces are within or under the building footprint, and then 12 on the site area, surface area. As I said, the building will be some 71 feet to the roof line. There is no setback proposed from the west property line, which is along North Main. There is a setback on the south side of some 10 feet off of 11 Mile Road. There are no changes to the access points to the site. All access to the parking would be internal, within the site. The petitioner is proposing to maintain the Main Art Theater marquee. The primary reason I bring that up this evening is if you want to consider that, it doesn't comply with the sign ordinance. It would be something you would allow or recommend to the City Commission as part of the PUD going forward. Terms of parking, you will see that there are some charts in there that have provided background of the parking as the project has developed over time, starting back with its original approval. The parking requirement based on, in the PUD, is based on a rich parking study that was prepared, based on a shared parking analysis. It came up with ratios based on, based on the types of uses that would be in the PUD. Those have been consistently used throughout the project as we've moved forward. There was an amendment at one point to include the theater that changed the ratio, but that was included. As we've indicated in the report, based on the proposed development, and according to those ratios, this development would actually increase the weekday surplus of available parking from what was previously approved at 19 to 143 under the proposed site plan. While the weekend deficiency that was previously allowed of 164 would be reduced or decreased to 21 based on those ratios. For comparison purposes, we have indicated that the terms of height, the North Main building, the lofts, is 116 feet, and the Imagine building is some 38 feet. This is a recommendation to the City Commission, meaning any action you would take today would be a recommendation to that body for the final review and consideration. I guess I will stop there as far as background and see if there's any questions with me, and then I can walk through maybe the staff contingency items. Commissioner Douglas.
Mr. Twain, would you please tell us a little bit more about the relationship between the underlying zoning of this site and its relationship to the planned unit development?
Well, originally, this site was in multiple zoning districts. It included general business. It included multifamily, and it, I believe it may have even included some neighborhood business along 11 Mile Road. So the underlying district to the original approval had different districts in it. The portions would have had different allowed uses. It would have had different potential parking requirements. It would have had different special land uses. The planned unit development allowed you to simply roll that in and consider it as a total package at that time. I don't know if that hits your question, or if you've got some more to do.
Well, so if you look at the zoning map, I mean, the zoning map indicates that this is, it's not general business, it's...
Well, right now, it indicates it's a PUD, because that's what technically occurs here. We've rezoned all of this property to a planned unit development.
Okay.
The prior zoning that was in place prior to that PUD is basically gone.
But what we had there on that site, initially, the zoning that was there reflected to a greater, latter, or even greater extent what is proposed now in terms of retail, office, residential.
Right, depending on where, depending on where the zoning was.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, but, okay.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make doubly clear. Going back to 2004, it is now zoned a PUD. That's not the sort of thing that expires, right? That's, that's a zoning that's in place since that point in time.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Twain. This is considered a final PUD plan, but procedurally, are we, are we looking at this and making a recommendation, or is this the procedure where this is a preliminary, and then if they want to come back in six months, they, they can, if we give them some direction? I'm just, I want to make sure I got the procedure right.
No, the request is for you to consider it as a final. That's what the request is from the petitioner, to move it forward, and you can consider it in that fashion. They have submitted all the information we need to deal with it as a final and move it forward to the City Commission. There's nothing lacking in terms of detail or plans.
Okay, maybe, I guess I'm just curious, because everything else we're doing here, and this may be a question for counsel, but it seems to be we're starting from, from square one on the PUD procedure, and that is part of the original, that is part of a PUD procedure, so it seems to me that that might be something that is part of the, part of the procedure, is to have them come back if we want them to.
Well, you can clearly make a motion depending on, if you feel there's something lacking and you need detail from them, and you want them to come back within six months, you should say so. But if you don't, there's no reason to hold it up.
I just want to follow the right procedure, but I think...
No, we're fine. We've, we've on multiple occasions dealt with planned, planned unit developments and things in one step from the planning commission.
Okay, all right.
It's not uncommon.
All right, thank you. Mr. Grantino.
To be clear, what, what is in front of us, though, is an amendment to the, the PUD that exists, correct?
That's correct.
That's what we're looking at, as a, as a final, okay. Just want to make sure I'm clear.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Twain?
Well, then I'll just briefly run through some of the items, contingency-wise. Primarily, one of the, as I said, it will need City Commission action. This is a recommendation to the City Commission, so any action you take here will go up there with any action items. One of the issues we've identified with the petitioner is the north facade of the proposed building currently sits on a designated property line. They will need to address that in order to comply with the building code as they have openings on that north side. We're not suggesting whether they move the property line or find some other way to deal with it today, but just noting that they need to deal with that before it can move forward as, as presented. Obviously, the Planning Commission has to be comfortable with the proposed setbacks of the building and any of the landscaping, although there's no additional landscaping being proposed. We've identified that any sidewalk cafes might be proposed as part of a restaurant that would want a sidewalk cafe would need further action. And we are suggesting by reference that any of the parking requirements would be, for the building, would continue to follow the rich and associates parking ratio. And then, as I said earlier, you'd have to make some determination on whether you wanted to recommend the proposed, that the marquee sign be part of the project and then move forward. One item there that we've identified is to make sure that the height of it complies with fire engineering codes, as it does hang over the public right of way. One other item that I did talk to the petitioner about is to make sure it doesn't have any electronic message board or message center on that unless you want it to. The remaining contingencies are really standard contingencies in regarding to make sure all the easements and other paving and building codes and engineering codes are complied with. So those are the items that are listed in the contingency. As you said, it is a public hearing. What I would point out in terms of the public hearing, we did post multiple emails that we did receive as of this afternoon. Those were posted and are attached to the end of the materials. In addition to that, some that we received after, those were posted to the agenda I've printed out and given to you. If there were, if there were any received after that, I don't have them, so that's what I'll say with that. Most of those have indicated an objection to the demolition of the Main Art Theater and a desire to keep that. What I will say for everyone's clarity in that regard, because the Planning Commission does have the option to recommend approval of the plan to the City Commission. You can recommend approval with conditions. You can suggest modifications, or you can recommend denial. What I want to be clear on is none of those recommendations potentially will save the Main Art Theater. The petitioner and property owner have the right to demo that building at any point in time right now. Even if this moves forward, they have that right. We have no city codes or ordinances that are protecting of this existing Main Art Theater.
All right, thank you. I got one more quick question, if you don't mind. It has to do with the parking requirements. There's 54 residential units proposed, correct?
51.
51, okay, that might make a difference. So, and there's 56 parking inside the building and 12 outside the building? Is that in conformance with our parking requirements for residential, or does that matter here?
It doesn't matter. We're treating the entire site as one site, so whether they're under the building, adjacent to the building, or somewhere else, it's, it's the entire site, including the parking deck that's adjacent to the main north loft. All of that is shared parking.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions, Ms. Beeky?
You mentioned there's no ordinance protecting the building. Were there ever any historic studies or any other historic comment from our committees that worked on such things regarding this building?
Well, as I said, it's not a design, there's, there's no ordinance or requirements in place that would save it. It's not in a local historic district. It's not understudied by the Historic Study Committee. There's no resolution from the City Commission designating it as such. There is no ordinance in existence that has control over it.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to add one comment, that there were over 100 comments that I noted were in that attachment to our minutes.
There's about 184 pages there, but some of them are doubled, and I believe, I don't know how many I handed out to you.
Right, I mean, I counted it. I read more than 100 is what I'm saying. I just wanted to note that for the record in support of retaining the main theater.
I have one more.
Just again, for the sake of clarity, your statement that kind of were back-to-back when you said, "Here, we're going to make some recommendation to City Commission," whether that's as-is or with some recommendation, you know, some contingent, or recommend not to move ahead with this particular one. And then I think the next statement, you know, back-to-back there was, there's nothing in place that prevents the petitioner from demolish the Main Art Theater. And that means also City Commission doesn't have the power to stop that, right? Like, not only is it not within our purview to have any effect on that, but it's also not in the purview of City Commission to affect that, right? Is that what you said?
Well, I didn't say the City Commission doesn't have some authority to do something when it gets to them, but...
Oh, okay.
There is nothing in place today that precludes it from moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. ...
So...
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Twain? Or Ms. Beeky?
I'm sorry, based on that, and with regard to the PUD, though, I understand we have the authority to have some contingencies that might, you can comment on the building itself, including the building that exists.
Under any site plan or special land use, you have the ability to decide what's going to be there. Any private property owner can demo their building on their site anytime they want to. Homeowners, commercial businesses, they could, they can knock down the Imagine Theater, and alls they need to do is make the disconnects of these utilities and services, and you've got no discretion over whether somebody keeps a building. What you have, the ability is what goes in.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Okay, I think the petitioner and their team is here. I would ask them to come forward and give us a presentation supporting your petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members. First, I would like to...
Introduce yourself.
Sure. I was going to introduce all of us, but I'll introduce myself first. I am Dennis Cowan with the law firm of Plunkett Cooney, and I am helping lead the presentation this evening. Along with me this evening are Jordan Jonah, a principal owner of North Main Square LLC, and the applicant this evening. Our architect of Biddensen Architecture and Design is Kevin Biddensen, who's here, and also Eric Williams of Stonefield Engineering has performed the engineering work. Just on one procedural note, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that my letter and all the submittals of the applicant be made part of the record of tonight's proceeding, including all the drawings and information and plans presented to the Planning Department.
I believe they are. Is there any reason why they wouldn't be?
Okay, thank you. Just so there's no confusion, North Main Square is proposing a five-story mixed-use building that includes retail, office, and residential components. We believe it's the only building in downtown Royal Oak, and certainly the only new building that represents all three of these uses. Truly a mixed-use building. One of the bylines of our city has been live, work, and play in this community, and certainly this building will exemplify all of those goals. It has been noted that there was an original PUD plan, and that original proposal by the initial developer in around 2005 was on this particular site on the northeast corner of Main and 11 to have a 12-story mixed-use building. So what North Main Square is proposing is modest compared to that structure, and we believe serves as a bridge at 11 Mile from the much taller buildings to the north, the condominium building, the hotel, the Icon Building, and then a transition point with this five-story building into the one- and two-story buildings along Main Street and a couple three-story buildings. I should note that all three of the uses that are proposed in the building have been previously approved by the city as part of the PUD process and its amendments. The property at this northeast corner of 11 Mile and Main is a premier location in the community, and North Main Square believes it has proposed a building that represents this important piece of our downtown geography. As you know, it is often said in real estate, there's three important things: location, location, location. And North Main Square is very appreciative of this opportunity to construct a great building in a great location. As Mr. Twain noted, we have three components. Our retail restaurant component is about 9,300 square feet, and we believe that will attract quality users, especially those in the industry who are attracted to premier locations such as 11 Mile and Main. Our office space will be what is termed the Class A office space, which is still much needed in downtown Royal Oak to attract businesses and workers to our downtown. This Class A office space will help realize the Royal Oak Downtown Task Force, which in 2017 recommended more office space in downtown to draw restaurant, service, and retail customers. There will be three floors of residential space, as shown on the plans, of various sizes, including studio apartments, which will be discussed later. There are only 51 units, and North Main Square is not seeking to compete in the downtown luxury multifamily market, which they believe is rather saturated at this point. And as we noted in our letter, North Main Square is requesting that they be allowed to have the alternative to transform the third floor, which is currently residential, into office. We do have a potential user, which is consolidating office space from several locations in southeastern Michigan, and if that does work out, they could potentially be taking two floors instead of one. Mr. Twain also mentioned a very important building feature, which is, would be the reinstallation of the Main Art Theater marquee, and I want to make it absolutely clear to you and to the public, we have no intention of turning it into a message board or an LED sign. You can make that a condition. We want to leave the, with some improvements to the, to the lighting, obviously, and it needs to be, the guts of it need to be somewhat updated. Leave it with the white backboard, so to speak, message board. The marquee would be used to advertise community, city, charitable, and civic-type events or messages, such as the Christmas tree lighting ceremony or an event in Centennial Park, but would have some limited commercial use, such as announcing a new business opening in downtown or Restaurant Week. We can certainly work out all those details at a later date, but that is the, kind of the gravamen or the point that we want to make in the use of the Main Art Theater. It all, marquee, it has always been a wayfinding sign. When you hit that sign, you know you've hit downtown Royal Oak. I also want to talk a little bit about the environmental features of the building. Unfortunately, due to its location, and it's already the configuration of the remainder of the PUD, there's not a great opportunity for additional greenery or landscaping, but we do have some significant sustainable features. We do have two EV charging stations for four vehicles on the interior. There will be low E-rated windows used. We do, will employ high-efficient HVAC systems and LED lighting. North Main Square with this building will not be adding to the stormwater system. It will be net neutral, as the entire property in this PUD is primarily already hard-surfaced. North Main Square is also planning on having components of public art on the building, including a potential mural on the east side of the building facing Imagine Theater and potential opportunities for street art, which may be in and around the building if it meets all safety requirements and things of that nature. So that's just a little overview. What I'd like to do now is invite up Jordan Jonah, and then I'd like to make a few closing comments after Mr. Jonah speaks.
Mr. Cowan, before you sit down, you referenced a letter that you provided in terms of office versus residential?
No, in my, in my letter that I sent a couple weeks ago, I did mention in the letter that we'd like to have the alternative on the, for the third-floor space.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Jordan Jonah, and I have the privilege of presenting this project on behalf of my family company, AF Jonah Development and Management Company. We are a local-based company, not in Royal Oak, but just neighboring cities here, and we have done multiple projects in Royal Oak. We do take pride in what we develop and manage, and this is, we feel part of the city. So this is a very good project that we feel is, is, is a good development here on the corner. In the planning so forth of this project, first, we bought this property back in about 2017. During COVID, Landmark Theater is one of the largest theater chain operators, decided to shut our house and asked to leave, and we took the keys back and put it in possession back last year. It's, it's been quite a planning stages for us. While, while going through the PUD, we noticed, we know that we can build a large-story building here, and we didn't feel that was right for this property. We wanted to take the building down from the, the 12 stories that was originally planned in the planned, planned unit development and take it down to five. We thought this better suited the corner, going north with the larger buildings and looking south with the smaller buildings. We thought it was a good break point on a good height for, for the building to be there. We've looked at a lot of different aspects in planning, and as you can see, this is a four-sided building. There's, there's not a back... There's, there's not a backup of building, per se. It's a four-sided architectural. We recessed all the balconies in, and we did not take advantage of the overhang onto Main Street. We want it to be recessed in to give it more of a flush feel and more of a pedestrian walkway area. We've took a lot into planning with the units, the mixed type. We wanted, as Dennis said, a live-work-play environment on this corner. We don't believe there is another building suitable like this in downtown Royal Oak, and we thought it was a new to the market, and we were looking to make a good investment here, and hopefully it's generational in our property. I'm happy to answer any of the questions or concerns. We also have Kevin Bidson and Eric Williams here that can answer more of the technical questions. I'll take the easy ones. First, thank you very much for having us. Dennis will take it from here.
Thank you.
As has been previously noted, tonight, the Planning Commission is acting somewhat in an advisory capacity to recommend to the City Commissioner an amendment to the PUD agreement. And, Mr. Chairman, just, I noted the procedural discussion you had with Mr. Thwing, and I think, and I know many times you are asked to do a preliminary and then a final. In this instance, I think that's not the case, because we already have a final PUD plan that's on, you know, in the books and records of the city that's already been approved, and what we're merely seeking is an amendment to that for one part of it, and I think that's the distinction between the preliminary and a final that you do in many other types of This will mean that you need to take into consideration the criteria established in the PUD ordinance in Royal Oak, and I did specifically add to my letter a section addressing our compliance. We believe we meet or exceed all of those six standards, as stated in the letter, but I do want to highlight a couple points. First and foremost, this development is consistent with the Royal Oak Master Plan and the overall PUD plan for this area, which did, in fact, transform this entire northeast corner of 11 Mile and Main. Many of us are old enough to remember what was there, and although we appreciated all those businesses and the investment they made over the years, they're definitely, the city determined there was a need to have a transformational project. This is the last piece of this project, transformational project at that corner, and it has spurred, I believe, development up and down Main Street by the fact that this private investment happened with city cooperation to the extent of establishing a PUD and allowing the freedom within the PUD to then make changes as the project moved forward. In particular, under the Master Plan, this project will enhance the physical appearance of downtown, and as I previously stated, it meets the mixed-use goals for the downtown, which includes retail, office, and housing. Finally, North Main will also promote a pedestrian-friendly environment, as it will continue to maintain the currently continuous walkway on both Main and 11 Mile. There will also be additional workers, visitors, and residents of the building in this area walking to and from the parking deck, and as we anticipate, also walking to downtown restaurants, shops, and services. This project will not burden any existing public services, streets, or utilities, and will not result in any negative economic impact on surrounding properties. So we ask you this evening for a positive recommendation. We do not have any objection to the contingencies that are listed on the letter. There's a few details that need to be worked out, such as on the north facade and some building code-type issues, but we believe those can be worked out. And we would like to move forward on this this evening and be able to then go to the City Commission for final approval of the PUD plan and this amendment. Several years ago, the Royal Oak Downtown Task Force had a goal to create additional office space. That was one goal. The goals were many. And I quote from the report, "to have developed new strategically located fabulous mid-rise buildings." We believe the main building is fabulous, and its office component will help meet that goal. So we respectfully request your support and recommendation for this PUD amendment, and then go forward to the City Commission. So with that, our main presentation is concluded. If you have any questions, either I, Mr. Jonah, or our design professionals would be glad to answer them.
All right, thank you.
Either an hour later.
Mr. Klooster.
Okay, so, a number of questions. Can you speak to the ownership model plan for the multifamily units?
Those will be rental units.
Rental units, excellent. Would you be able to speak to the development team's plan as to how to address the issue with the building code on the north side of the property at this time?
I think I could briefly state it. We proposed that there would be a no-build zone along that northern facade. That has worked in other places, but we haven't gotten far enough. I think the idea was that once we got past the Planning Commission before we went for final, we would sit down and work out all those details. But I would note that if you look at the spacing between the Hyatt Hotel and the Icon Building, it's about the same, actually. Our spacing between the property to the north and also where the new property or the new main building will be located are about the same. Ours may actually be a little bit more. So we think that we'll be able to meet the requirements of that building code. It'll just take a sit-down and look at the map and the surveys and make sure everything works appropriately.
I've seen it handled similarly with permanent easements and the like, to make sure that you can't build within that area to maintain the prescriptive.
Right, and quite clearly, I'll tell you, that would be the intent, because we have a whole row of parking there, and then we have that we don't want to lose for the, for the PUD, and then we also, then you're immediately on top of the driveway, so there's no intent to build there.
And I understand that the parking that is proposed as part of this southwest corner development is intended strictly for the residential units?
Yes.
Are there, I don't see access controls or anything like that proposed in the package that I'm seeing. Is that, is the intent for there to be access controls such that Imagine Theater patrons, retail patrons, et cetera, wouldn't accidentally find their way in there?
No, there'll be a key-card system, you know, which is pretty standard for that type of operation.
Accgated access controls, swing doors, et cetera. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Grantina?
The sustainability features that you had mentioned, the EV chargers, if you could just confirm that those would be for use for the residents of the building only, not for public use, correct?
That's correct. They'll be located on the interior, right.
Other questions? All right, I got a couple. Let's, let's stick with EV and the parking here. The 12 parking spaces to the east facing Imagine Theater, are those are public or for the residents?
Well, they're part of the PUD, so as Mr. Thwing mentioned, they could be utilized by the residents, because each resident will have at least one parking space. If they have more cars, they can park anywhere in the PUD. We believe most people will park in the parking structure, because you need to pay or have a key card to get into the parking structure. So those, those 12 units there could be used by, or, excuse me, 12 parking spaces could be used by, by anyone, could be used by customers of Imagine Theater, customers of any of the retail or the office visitors to the building.
Okay, and so just to be clear about that, so if I rented an apartment here, I could park anywhere in the surface parking lot as a routine, because it's public access, right?
Right.
Okay, so how many EV charging stations did you plan for the interior?
Two charging stations, which would serve two vehicles each.
And have you considered putting EV charging stations along the building on those public-access parking spots?
We haven't considered it specifically, but that could be a possibility to put some along that area, as long as we could have proper security and that kind of issue. But go ahead.
There are a few charging stations already on the site, and there is a planned development to put a few more. Those are along the northern side of the property, next to Imagine Theater. That are already current there, and we're looking to do a couple more in the future for the whole PUD.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. If you, I mean, you've got to put the infrastructure in to put the charging stations somewhere in this building on the first floor. I don't, I'm not a designer for that sort of thing, but it seems it might be an opportunity to have charging stations for the public. I think we're going in that direction. We're going to need more charging stations. That would be a public benefit.
Yes, that is not a problem.
All right, thank you. Couple more questions. The parking, in the drawing, I'm looking at C2, the site plan here, and I think you just said all those parking spaces facing the building on the north, they're going to stay, right?
Yes.
Is, so is the trash enclosure, how is that going to work? Is that going to be on rollers? You're going to take that out? How's, how's the dumpster going to get emptied?
Well, we, we noted that there is an, we want you to note that there is an inside trash control, or feature, and dumpster feature inside, which will most likely also have a compactor. We're hoping to work it out that we can eliminate the outside dumpster. We did put it in place, because it is there now, but our goal is to not have that dumpster on the outside eventually, and just use the inside dumpster for the building for the office, residential, and the retail space.
Okay, I think I understand. You, I mean, you've got a trash enclosure that's inside the parking deck. You've got a trash, you've got a dumpster enclosure that's there now.
Right.
The trash enclosure on the inside is not going to have a dumpster in it?
It'll be a compactor.
Okay.
Right.
All right. The loading dock, or the loading area, I'm not exactly sure how that works here. Can you, maybe your designer can explain? And I also, just follow, just to follow along those same lines, if I understand correctly, people who work and live in this building are going to have to traverse through the parking lot to get to their cars if they park in the, in the deck. What kind of pedestrian safety features are you going to? I'm worried about the pedestrian traffic interface here.
Yeah, well, first of all, for those who work in the office and who will be parking in the parking deck, there will be, there'll be an exit they can leave through the north part of the building. So they will be, they can walk through the building, take a stairwell or the elevator down, and that exit on the north, so that'll shorten their trip. We do anticipate, working with the city, to have some type of marked walkway that would be from that part of the building to the curb of the businesses right on the south side of the, where the condos are, and the currently existing businesses. So we anticipate there'll be some kind of walkway that would be marked, and there would be signage, so people would know that would be an area that we would have pedestrians walking through. Right now, as you know, there are people walking all through the, the building if they're going to, in particular, those who park maybe close to Main Street and walk all the way over. Not everybody uses the sidewalk, unfortunately, but people walking over to Imagine Theater or vice versa. So we think that we can work with the city to either have a marked pedestrian walkway and some signage, particularly from the building for the office workers and those living in the building.
Okay, so you, you just mentioned that there might be another elevator or access point on the north side?
Yes.
Okay, that's not shown on our plans.
At this time?
Because you've got them, you've got them exiting on 11 Mile. The elevator is near the 11 Mile.
Well, the elevator is, but there are some stairwells in the building also.
Okay. I guess I'd like to ask this question. You know, you're going to have the sign.
Okay, okay.
You're going to refurbish the sign, and the drawings show that it's on the Main Street side. If, if there was somebody who came to you at this point in the, in the planning and said, hey, I'm, I'm, I want to open a 100-seat theater in this building, is that something that could be accommodated?
The North Main Square has not gotten to the point yet, although they've had calls from individual businesses about the site, primarily because of all the publicity we've been getting, but the, that could be a possibility, and that would compete with other potential uses that would come to the owner of the building for that, for that spot.
Okay, and just to, just to clarify the reason I'm asking the question, you're going to have a theater marquee on your building, which I think is great that you're saving that. I think that's wonderful. But one use for it would be if there was a theater in, in the building, and I guess I'd like to, maybe we have to hear from Mr. Bidson about this, but it seems like you're, you're not done with. Folks, this, this is much more like a court hearing than a football game, just to remind you. So, but, I've got to remember where it was now. It just seems that if somebody were to come with a plan and a tenant who wanted to do a microtheater or 100-seat theater, I know it's possible. I know there's other business models like that. Seems that that sort of a tenant, I'd like to know if the building can accommodate that. So I'm not talking about a huge theater. Probably, maybe Kevin knows what I'm talking about here, something smaller.
Well, first of all, I want to clarify one thing. The retention of the Main Art Theater sign, marquee, was not meant to facilitate the development of any particular use inside the building in the retail space. We now currently have that scheduled as either retail or restaurant. Somebody made a proposal, that would be something that the landlord would look at just with any other proposal and make a decision on what was best for the building and best for the PUD.
All right, and my comment is only thinking about somebody who might, you know, who has the financial wherewithal to make something like that work, just, well, it seems like you have 16-foot ceilings there on the first floor. That's what I think you got. It's 16-foot floor to deck, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next question. Now, I'm taking up all the time here, but you've got six parking spaces that face 11 Mile, and it looks to me like that's just going to be an open area. That's something that we've talked about under this commission a number of times, disfavoring open parking on the first floor, especially in a, in a spot like that. Do you have any thoughts of how you might, is there anything we can do with that to animate that or wrap retail around, or, or do something to camouflage that or animate it?
I'll leave that up to, if Kevin could come forward, our architect, and comment on this.
Good evening, Kevin Bidson, Bidson Architecture. Thank you for having us tonight. Yes, there are several things that, that we can do. We have discussed, you know, the options of, you know, different types of screening or louvers or even glass that could go along there, so I think that, that's something, especially on that 11 Mile side, that we would definitely entertain.
All right, you understand that the thought there is that we, across the street, probably before we had the, had the, you know, the codes that we have now, we have hanging lights, and they're glaring out into traffic, and you see the cars in there, and it's not the best look for, for a significant corner like this.
Understood, yeah. I think we would be more than happy to, to approach that, that aspect of it.
All right, thank you. I got another question about the south side, and the drawings seem to show that your property line goes all the way down to four feet from the curb. Is that correct? Or is it, I'm a little confused by the drawings. I want to know how far that's, that the building is going to be set back from the curb?
17.
17 feet, I think. Yeah, from, from 11 Mile, from the back of the curb, it's a 17-mile setback. On Main Street, it's 18 from the back of the curb.
17 miles?
17.
Huh?
17 foot.
17, right.
Okay, thank you. Right now, the, it's 15 feet, or I think 14 feet from the back of the curb to the, to the wall there, so that wall, you're going to push that, just so people can visualize this, that, where that wall is today, that short wall, your building is going to be farther back than that.
Correct.
Is there going to be any planting on that south side?
The, the space there was, was very small. We had not proposed any additional plantings because of salt and other things there. We felt it just wouldn't be large enough to sustain something.
How, how deep is the, are the doors inset from, from the sidewalk?
The front doors vary. There are two doors, one for the residents, one for the office user, and I believe they're about six to eight feet.
Okay, part tell on the drawings. So, why does the transformer have to be where you've drawn it? Can it be somewhere farther from the, the street, or is that because of utilities coming in there?
I believe the location was due to existing utilities and the request with DTE in terms of those locations. of those locations.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Don't go away in case they do. All right, seeing none. I think I'm done with my questions for now. Thank you. All right. One more call. Anybody from the commission wishes to ask a question of the petitioner? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move to the public comment part of the public hearing. Now, I have to tell you something. Since I've been on this committee, I don't think I've seen this many people in the room. And of course, we, we are aware of, you know, the, you know, what people are saying, whether, there was 184 pages of documents that were public comments that we were provided. I can tell you, I personally looked at every single one of them. I can't say I read every word, but I looked at every one of them, including the one from the historical commission. And so, we want everybody to have a chance to, to speak, but we are, the rule is three minutes apiece. Can I just see a show of hands? How many people are here, sort of on behalf of the Save the Maine group? Okay, that's a lot of hands. If you all speak for three minutes, we're going to be here a long time, and you, you should be able to speak your mind. I, I, I will tell you though, again, we've read, at least I've read, most of what you, what you sent. What I'm going to ask is that, that if you, you want to come and speak, we're going to let you speak. If, if somebody's made your point already, maybe you can shorten your portion, because seriously, three minutes, not three minutes, because it's four minutes, because people have to come back and forth. So, I'd look like there were maybe 40 hands or 50 hands. That's like a three hours' worth of, of speaking. So, I, that's what my request of, of the public would be. So with that, let's start. If somebody would like to speak on this issue, on this site plan, please raise your hand. I'll call on you to come up. This guy right here. Please come up to the microphone.
No applause.
Please introduce yourself.
No applause.
What's that?
No applause.
Thank you. I just want to remind again what I said before. This is more like, it's a quasi-judicial hearing. It's not a courtroom, but it's quasi-judicial. I would ask that there wouldn't be cheering or sneering or applause. Save that for Comerica Park. And, and also I would remind you that, you know, people are going to shuffle out of here after they leave. I'd ask you to shut the door behind you if you're going to go into the lobby, and try to keep your voice down. We do hear that. So, just common courtesy, and we will, we will, and, and plus, the cheering will slow things down. So we don't want to do that either. So, please introduce yourself. You have three minutes. You heard my comment.
And address.
And address. Name and address.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jason Kriziac. I live at 55 Wellesley, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. I am the acting president of Friends of the Maine Art Theater, and we appreciate the opportunity that you've given all of us to make these comments today. I would ask anyone that's in here to, to make comments, to be respectful and cordial. I was on the City Commission for two terms, eight years, in, in neighboring Pleasant Ridge. I know what it is to be a volunteer up here. I know what it is to make these difficult decisions. I personally do not envy you in this situation, but I definitely understand what you are considering, and I really, from my heart, appreciate the consideration this evening. I would encourage all the people who are here to speak tonight to act, to make their comments in a cordial and respective way, and in this, in the spirit of solidarity, because ultimately I believe that this is a win-win situation for the city of Royal Oak, for the property developers, and for the citizens and the community of southeast Michigan that cares so much about this property and about this theater. So I just wanted to say thank you to that, to the commission. And I did also want to thank also Dennis Cowan and Jordan Jonah. They met with our group two times when they did not have to do that. I really appreciate that. We had very cordial and open conversations about the potential of this project. Obviously, they have, have their motivations and their priorities, and very respectful of that. But again, we feel like as, you know, a community, as a, as a group of residents that care about Royal Oak and care about this theater, that we can really, together, create a, a, a very memorable and important cultural space. And that's what we envisioned for the project. I did want to just touch on some things. I do hope the letter from the Royal Oak Historic District Study Committee would be entered into the record, because I believe it is significant, and it does identify the Royal Oak Main Art Theater as a historically significant property within the city of Royal Oak. I think that's very important in determining the future of this property. So I'd ask that the letter dated April 10th, 2022, from the Royal Oak Historic District Study Committee be entered into the record. I would ask that the committee today consider the outpouring of, of support for this theater, and ask that you either table the plans before you tonight until all stakeholders can meet and plan a win-win situation there, or an outright denial. So I thank you for your time. I do appreciate your service to the city of Royal Oak, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next? I saw that hand go up first with the hat back there.
Thank you, sir.
Please introduce yourself, address, three minutes.
Oh, three minutes, Dougie Fresh.
Or less.
Oh, man. Jason Van Luin, 921 North Gainesboro Avenue. Been a resident at that location for 20-plus years, lived in Royal Oak for 25 years. I'm going to read from here. Two children. I work at Royal Oak Middle School. I was, we were watching in one of our language and arts classes, Mr. Chees's class, writing, or, we were watching a movie. The writer, J.K. Rowling, all right? Where, how do you think, this is a rhetorical question, where, how do you think she got inspired to be a writer locally? Where, how do you think she first made, made it big, she's got her first shot to be a writer locally? James Kane, Jim Nash, Michael Semino, Anthony Held, David, Maggie, Tom Sizemore, Richard Ford, Jim Harrison, Noel Paul Stokie, Chris Hansen, Bob Seeger, Stevie Wonder, Iggy Pop, Ted Nugent, Sonny Bono, The White Stripes, The Verve Pipe, on and on and on, Lucy Liu, et cetera. Where do you think they got inspired to go into their chosen professions? There are singers in here, writers, you know, everything, locally. Where, how do you think they got their first chance to shine, potentially make it big, locally? And incidentally, I got a bunch of people listed here. They're all Michigan people. Some of them went to the best, some of them also went to the best college in the state of Michigan, Michigan State. Someone went to the second, third, or 10th-best U of M. Tim Allen, Bruce Campbell, Glenn Frey, Sam Ramey, Jim Ellison, Dave Woodward, Andy Levin, Kim Gibbs, Jack Kevorkian, Ivan Ramey, Ted Ramey, et cetera, et cetera. Where, how do you think they got inspired to go into their chosen professions locally? Where, how do you think they got their chance to demonstrate their talents and got given abilities before the court of public opinion and cult of personality locally? Incidentally, for those people that I just listed there, locally is, or was, someone that passed away, Royal Oak. To all of them, it was Royal Oak. I'd like you to think about the situation, and I think you guys have a really good plan. Oh, by and large, you know.
Ten seconds.
Oh, shoot, I got personal. My goal in life was just to get out of my house. Didn't have a great childhood. Grew up in Durbin Heights.
Yeah, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, given the, given the number of people here.
Grew up in Durbin Heights. One thing that made me, like, you know, keep going, was I knew there was a potential, you know? I read, through writing, like what I read, when I saw, all that stuff.
I think the commission understands your point. Take it.
All right. Pulled out a theater in Westland, was tore down.
All right. This gentleman way over here by the wall. Hope I didn't know you were going to have to walk all the way around. Sorry about that. Introduce yourself, address.
Good evening. James Salem. I live at 350 North Main. I will be a resident of Royal Oak one year, as of this Friday. I purchased a condo in the 350 North Main building with a south-facing view. Paid a premium for that unit. Had I known that this development would go up as a five-story building, I would not have bought that unit. This will negatively impact the view that I currently have. Will also negatively impact, obviously, my neighbors on the sixth floor, which I am on, and the fifth floor as well. So I know that you have a lot of interests to consider. Those are the city, those are the developer, those are the residents. I'm not naive to think that the world revolves around me, or that my interest supersedes others. Would just like to ask you to put that into consideration, that there are people who, you know, I'm 38 years old. I saved, invested, sacrificed 15 years to be able to buy that unit and pay what I paid for it. And so that there are residents like me who will be negatively impacted by the development, if it is five stories. So I'd like to you to consider possibly modifying the development so that does not negatively impact the current residents of 350 North Main. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the maroon sweater there. And I'll tell you what, I saw another hand come up. I think to save time, why don't we, I'm going to call on another person to come, yeah, why don't you, woman in the black t-shirt, just be ready.
Mine's going to be short and sweet. All I would ask you to do is take in consideration of building up and leaving the maintenance there, because it's the heart of the city. The Maine Theater, I've been here almost 40 years. It's part of Royal Oak. It's the big part.
Thank you. You can come up and, and be ready next.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Shirley Davis Tomzak, and I, I live in Lapeer, Lapeer County, 5923 Lake George Road in Dryden Township. I grew up in Royal Oak in the 40s, when one of the few fun things to do was to see a movie at the Maine Theater. I saw my first movie there when I was five. For the past 30 years, I have lived in Lapeer County, and for most of those years, like hundreds of other people, I have driven at least five times a year into Royal Oak to meet friends, have dinner, and see an art movie at the Maine. The city of Lapeer is not nearly as cool as Royal Oak, but they have preserved their old movie theater and made it a cultural, social hub for residents. They have a youth theater, a concert series of out-of-town and hometown entertainers, and lots of seasonal activities. I think Royal Oak owes it to its citizens to consider that kind of a purview for our beloved Maine Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. And why don't, why don't the gentleman way in the back come up here too? Come up, and let's have a little line of maybe two or three people who are ready to go. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Lorna Cochrane. I'm an owner at Maine North Loft, 350 North Main, as Jim was a few speakers ago, and I want to echo those sentiments. Contrary to what Mr. Cowan said, no economic impact, there will be a significant economic impact to everyone living on the fifth and sixth floor who paid a premium. And we've been loyal taxpayers for 16 years, paying premium taxes for that south-facing view, which now intentionally is going to be blocked by a white brick building and garbage dumpsters. So I'm very disappointed that we will all be suffering decreased value in our property, and naturally will be coming to the city and asking for an appeal and a review of our taxes assessments. Very disturbing. And the other thing is, as an original owner, I remember the drawing and development by Joseph Reed. That 12-story building was not at the corner of 11 and Main. It was on the property that the Imagine Theater is on, and its front facade would be facing Main Street, not 11 Mile. And the artist's drawing depicted landscaping and park benches at 11 and Main. So this is something that is really not what many of the original owners had intended to happen to this property. So thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Introduce yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Nadolsky. I am a resident at 938 West 11 Mile for the past two and a half years, member of the YMCA of Royal Oak. My office is at 2015 Valera Avenue, right by the beautiful Kroger there. I am in support of this project for that beautiful corner. It's a post into our city where people come and visit. They visit me on 11 Mile off of 75. They're coming from Rochester. They're coming from Detroit. They're coming off of Woodward. And as we enter our beautiful downtown, we see that corner, a dilapidated building right now, that is, is interesting. And I think this is a beautiful project. I also have to fight for my friends to eat in Royal Oak. I have to fight for them to come to Royal Oak. We're losing them to Birmingham to eat. And I like the idea of a restaurant there, and I like the idea of a beautiful building right on the cornerstone of 11 and Main. I think that's beautiful. I think a lot of people will see that as they go to 75. And I've heard a lot of people say, we need retail, we need retail, we need Lululemon, we need beauty. People go to Birmingham for that, and I think Royal Oak will be a step in the direction with a beautiful building like this right on our corner. It just helps make it beautiful and stretch our downtown north. So, thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Madurski, M-A-D-U-R-S-K-I. I live at 1014 Longfellow Avenue in Royal Oak. I have a question. Please correct me if I am wrong, but did not the master plan for Royal Oak's downtown, one of their objectives was supposed to preserve cultural institutions? Yes? No? Okay. Well, what do we have to offer new residents besides restaurants and bars? Who are we looking to attract to this city? The public relations firm said that lack of interest caused the shuttering, and that streaming was taking over. No, COVID closed it. And you cannot scream, stream many indie films, and some, some movies can only be appreciated in feet, not inches. The same public relations firm said that the theater would be a high-risk business transaction. Tell that to the DIA's Film Theater, which sells out many of their showings, or the Renford, which has existed since 1928. It was bought by a group similar to this, and after seven years on a land contract, was able to pay off the balloon payment. Our theater could be utilized in conjunction with other events, like arts beats and eats, for music and dance performances. Presently, our Royal Oak Symphony has to rent venues for its concerts. Incorporating the iconic marquee with no theater would only be a constant reminder of what we lost and what we could have had. Properties in Midtown have tripled because they have kept their cultural institutions. That's where I used to live 42 years ago, in the Cass Quarter, before I moved to Royal Oak. Not looking so much for a city, but for a community. Please don't make me move down to Midtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lisa Erickson. I live at 318 Waverly in Royal Oak. I just want to appeal to some sensibilities here. You know, everyone talks about sustainability. That's a buzzword everyone's using. Some people mean it, some people don't. If we restore the property, that's sustainable. If we tear it down, build something else, no matter how sustainable this new building is, this is not sustainable. And this is not something that's good for the environment. this is not sustainable. And this is not something that's good for the environment. It creates a larger, much larger carbon footprint than the Main Theater ever did. That's something that we should think about for our environment. I haven't heard anyone talk about that. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do something. I might be a little naive and idealistic, but I think that, you know... Does the Jonah Company really need more money? Do they really need to do this property? Do they need it that desperately? You know, they could probably get an enormous tax write-off by donating that theater to the city of Royal Oak and then let it be run by the friends that we've developed over this period of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hello. I'm Zain. I live at 4015 Oren Court, and I'm here fully in support of this project going forward without any modifications. There are two main reasons why I feel this way. The first is opportunity. The second is environmental concerns. We have a critical housing shortage in the United States, and Michigan is no different. We've built something like on the order of tens of thousands less homes than we need to in the last two decades. And this is a prime location to remedy that issue. If it weren't, kind of going back to art, something that's been brought up a lot here, if it weren't for the ability for 20th century New York artists to be able to afford to live where other people or other creatives wanted to live, then a lot of great works wouldn't have happened because people like Jackson Pollock wouldn't have been able to afford to live with other artists. So like something like this is really important to allowing art to continue. When it comes to sustainability and the environment, if we don't build this, then we'll keep sprawling further out into farmland and destroying untouched nature. There will be more car trips taken because people will be living in less walkable communities further out in the periphery. And as a result, Royal Oak will be hamstrung and won't be able to become a hub for the growth of Michigan into the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Massey. I live at 1034 North Alexander in Royal Oak. I've lived there for 20... I've lived in the city for 24 years. And I'm speaking out to oppose Jonah's plan to tear down the Main Art Theater and replace it with mixed-use development. I want to speak to the word zeitgeist. It's a German word that literally translates into spirit of the times. The spirit of these times as we exit the pandemic is toward community and openness. We may have all been streaming Netflix in our living rooms for the last two years, but it's time to come outside again. There is room for a shared community experience. Royal Oak recently completed a year-long Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. The basic premise is to make Royal Oak a more sustainable, welcoming, and climate-friendly community, not just for current residents, but for future generations. We need more energy-efficient new commercial and residential construction. Emissions from electricity and natural gas account for more than... Produced by these buildings account for more than 56% of the greenhouse gases generated in the city. Improved mobility, waste, and water infrastructure, green space, and quality of life are also part of this plan, which is available for draft comment on the city website. The vision section dealing with the section... The vision statement dealing with the quality of life section reason, I'm quoting. "Royal Oak offers a healthy, safe, and welcoming community that prioritizes arts and culture, community connections, economic opportunity, lifelong learning, diverse housing, outstanding public services, and excellent stability for all." I fail to see how tearing down a beloved historic theater that embodies the arts, culture, and community connections mentioned here and replacing it with a 71-foot-high commercial and residential building, which abus Main Street and only has a 10-foot setback from 11 Mile, which does not eliminate current surface parking space, adds no meaningful green space, and which does not even attempt to incorporate any space for a smaller cinema to replace the Main meets one single one of the forward-looking ideas promoted in this sustainability plan that the city promotes, or for that matter, Royal Oak's original master plan. How about building... How about changing the vision a bit? How about building a pocket park on the corner of 11 Mile and Main in what are now empty parking spaces? How about a living roof or solar panels on a new building? You know, how about giving the residents who've spoken here a little bit of a chance to see something more than more brick and concrete as they look out their windows, the loft residents? You know, I think that it... I think that... I want, you know, you... Another thing we've mentioned here is aging in place. Well, I'd like to age in place in Royal Oak. I'd like to walk downtown and catch a movie at the Main Art, meet my friends for a drink or for coffee.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
That's about it. Anyway, thank you. I oppose that.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Claire Ross. I live at 2012 Dallas Avenue. I've lived in Royal Oak for most, if not all, of my life. I don't disagree that a combination workspace, retail space, and rental space would be good for the city of Royal Oak. However, I don't think on top of one of the most culturally significant buildings in Royal Oak is where it belongs. The city of Royal Oak may not recognize the Main Art Theater as a historical building, but its citizens most definitely do.
Hi.
Please introduce yourself.
My name's John Monahan. I live at 135 Cambridge in Pleasant Ridge. I've been attending the Main Art Theater, or the Main Theater regularly for the last 40 years. I also screen films in the area. I ran an independent film program at the Main in the late 1980s when it was still a neighborhood movie theater, not an art house, and have since gone on to show similar offbeat modern and classic films at the Magic Bag in Ferndale and the Redford Theater in Detroit, where I am one of the programmers currently. I am no expert on commercial real estate, but I'm pretty sure that the developers' plans to build this five-story mixed-use building require concessions from the city to make the plans fit the space at 11 Mile and Main. So if concessions are given to the developers, can't the city of Royal Oak ask for concessions in return? Like working with the Friends of the Main Art to incorporate space for an independent film venue into its plans? The Friends of the Main Art has already proven itself a viable organization with professionals in the community, myself included, able to get a proper film program running, uprunning, and making money to sustain itself. Members of the Planning Commission, I know you want the best for Royal Oak, but please don't be shortsighted. So much of Royal Oak's artistic soul has already been gobbled up by more and more condos and more and more chain restaurants. The city's credibility as a diverse and creative location will be forever undermined unless you make a stand tonight. The loss of the Main Art Theater is a huge loss to culture in Royal Oak and Metro Detroit. There is simply no one doing this kind of film programming in the area. To quote Spike Lee, or more specifically, Ossie Davis, "Do the right thing and reject this proposal to replace the Main Art Theater, which serves the entire community with, instead of an expensive and sterile building that benefits only a select few." My last point is directed at the developers. Please rethink incorporating the historic Main Art sign. It's an insult, not a tribute to Royal Oak. Just scrap it. There is no reason to advertise something that is not there. Berkeley Theater on 12 Mile looks great until you step inside and you're in a Rite Aid. Just scrap it. It's a gravestone. I don't want to end on such a negative note because I think there is a solution here. It starts with the Planning Commission asking the developers to rethink this proposal, to work with the Friends of the Main Art, to put a theater behind that marquee. Not as a philanthropic gesture, but as a money-making endeavor that will satisfy the city's cultural needs and the developers' bottom line. Please, Planning Commission, make the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Lisa Pryor. I live at 40156 Auburn Drive in Royal Oak. I've been a resident for 20 years, and I'm also the president of the Royal Oak Women's Club. And I'd like to read to you a letter of support that we have written on behalf of the Friends of the Main Art. Be it known that the Royal Oak Women's Club fully endorses the mission of the Friends of the Main Art Theater to preserve the historic Main Art and to maintain a venue for independent film in the city of Royal Oak. From its inception in 1902 until today, the Royal Oak Women's Club has been committed to the arts and culture. We believe the Main Art Theater serves an important role in our community by bringing people together, offering a unique entertainment experience, and making Royal Oak a desirable location to live, work, and visit. We're proud to publicly state our support for the Friends of the Main Art Theater. And for some of you who may not know, the Royal Oak Women's Club also facilitated one of the more historic things that happened at the Main Art, among many, and that was a speech given by Eleanor Roosevelt at the theater. So there is a lot of historic significance here. And I'd also say, growing up on the east side of Detroit, Royal Oak was always the place people wanted to go. It was the cool spot, known for just extraordinary venues, you know, whether it was shops, or restaurants, or bars, or entertainment venues. And when I moved back to Michigan after being away for 10 years, we purposely chose Royal Oak for that reason. And I just see with every new building that goes up, our extraordinary city is just becoming ordinary. I mean, this is a nice building. Some people may think it looks nice, but to me, it's just ordinary. It's just like another suburb. So please keep the soul of our city intact and let us save the Main. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Oliver. I live at 203 Dewey Street. You may see it because if you go up Rochester and see the Bonito's Pizza, I live next to it. You may wonder, "Why do I live above businesses to live in Royal Oak?" I actively chose to move to Royal Oak in the best possible situation as a public school teacher. To do that, I had to live above a business that likes to have very late meetings sometimes and in a bedroom that has very poor insulation. Something that I think is really concerning is that I don't think there's a lot of consideration about the next generations. Not because of environmental situations or anything. You know, I'm born in 1997, so it's kind of like that weird year. Are you a millennial? Are you a Gen Z? I really don't know either, you know? However, though, statistically, we have been earning less money. There are less affordable housing options. And I wanted to come to Royal Oak. I want to pay my taxes here. Like, I want to do this. And yes, like the Main Art is part of that, right? However, though, I want to be a part of this community. When you grow up in Sterling Heights, it's strip malls and Meyer. It's not anything. To be able to have a community in Royal Oak meant a lot to me. And of course, when I saw the Main was closing, that was really sad. But what also makes me sad is biking down to Washington and having to hear that annoying beep when more people are coming out of their luxury apartments when I have to live with two other roommates in order to live in a city that I frankly want to live in. I don't want to be pushed out into Clausen. I want there to be a cultural, diverse city that's moving forward. It's not just for, like, these types of, perhaps, like, yuppie people who are... Have a ton of money that can now buy these luxury apartments and these types of things. And they can say, "Oh, I live where the Main used to be. Isn't that so cool?" What would be really cool is to be able to make Royal Oak accessible for all types of people so that we can all mix our culture together to create one Royal Oak. That's something that I wanted when I came here. I don't want to be pushed out to Clausen. I don't want to have to be pushed into Ferndale. I want to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sam Summers. I live at 305 East 13 Mile Road, and I also grew up in the Royal Oak school system. You know, I see a lot of "Save the Main" shirts here tonight. Obviously, all those hands went up. There was also a rally held promoting the same cause a couple days ago. I think clearly there is a public outcry against the demolition of the Main Art. And, you know, I understand that the plan to demolish the building is well underway, but I'd just like to invite the City Planning Commission to assess why this outcry exists. You know, I learned about cinema from my trips to the Main Art Theater. You know, the midnight films, they kind of introduced me to, you know, a lot of staple films that have existed from throughout film history. And, you know, just like independent films that I was exposed to that gave me a lot of knowledge and insight about film. So, you know, I think the Main Art was an educational venue. And it's one that supports not only the arts, but the cultural health of the city. So I just believe that the city needs to use this space for something that patronizes the arts and stimulates the mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I have a little laryngitis. Sorry. My name's Jane Strunk. I live on 727 Gulf Avenue here in Royal Oak, where I've lived for 44 years. So I am a fully invested, longtime resident of Royal Oak, and I do understand and I've seen how change is inevitable. I've mourned a few: Patti Smith Shop and Barnes &amp; Noble, for example, and I've celebrated others, like our new Centennial Commons Park. I understand the Main Art is private property and that you, as our planning commissioners, have a prescribed job to do. And I also know that the voice of the public matters in our democratic processes. So I'm here to share our experience from 10 months of conversation with the public on Saturday mornings at the farmer's market, various Royal Oak events, and throughout the downtown business district. I failed to mention that I'm also Friends of Main Art Community Outreach Coordinator. So I'm out in the community, spreading the word. The proposed plan to demolish the historic storied Main Art Theater and develop the property is something quite different for Royal Oak. I think it's a defining moment. Out in the community, what we hear is concern, not just nostalgia, though, yes, people have deep cherished memories. And it's not just personal. There are themes of loss that I have noticed. Loss of culture, loss of the Royal Oak character, loss of identity, loss of Royal Oak charm, loss of history and legacy, loss of enjoyment, and a chosen lifestyle that centered around a great film at the Main, followed by dinner, cocktails, coffee for discussion with friends, or a film group. Our local businesses and those in neighboring communities want to know what's going to happen to the theater. They ask questions. They have enthusiastically supported Friends of Main Art. Some have offered their services. Others have reached out to us and asked for flyers. It just happened today. Somebody contacted me, came to my house and got some. They want to spread the word and post flyers on their storefront, keep stacks for customers. We get thank yous when we're out in the community. And our generous community donated 20 door prizes for our fall fundraiser. Overall, what we hear from the public is a little cynicism and a great deal of interest and concern for our city, the future of the Main Art, and independent cinema in our downtown. I believe great things can happen when leaders like you take the time to pause a process, slow down, gather more information, reflect, brainstorm, collaborate with stakeholders, and think out of the box, strive for that win-win-win. I don't know what's getting in the way of trying to do something that we can all be proud of, but I think we could figure that out and have a cultural gem that embodies our city's highest aspirations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks so much for all your patience. Thanks so much for all your insightful questions. My name is Pamela Murray. I live at 319 Crane in Royal Oak, where I've only lived for barely five years now, after being a lifelong Detroit-er and lifelong arts patron. I've learned a lot in working with the Friends of the Main Art in about the past six to nine months, but one piece of information I think you need to consider that nobody else has mentioned is what I learned from a Facebook poll that I took within the last couple weeks. I ask everyone who's been supporting us, who now numbers 2,000 on Facebook and well over that on our identifiable email list, where did they all come from? And did they come to the Main Art on a regular basis? I expected about 10 to 12 cities to be represented because I looked at the map and I thought we have about 10 to 12 cities adjoining Royal Oak. We have 43 cities represented and over 2,000 people, many of whom repeatedly told me, unfortunately, that the Main was the only thing left that appealed to them, to coming to Royal Oak because Royal Oak had lost so much of its culture, so much of its arts community. And so I paused, and I hope that you will pause, and do the same thing I did. I spent about two hours parsing through your mission statement, your... I'm blanking right now because I hate public speaking. Your assigned mission plan, main plan, I'm forgetting the word for it, but it says that you will preserve the arts, so I hope you will. the word for it, but it says that you will preserve the arts, so I hope you will, and understand that independent film counts as the arts. I think we have many, many opportunities for compromise on amending this project. And please give these over 2,000 arts lovers a reason to continue coming to Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Christopher Breen. I live on 916 Fernwood in Royal Oak. I'll try to keep it short and not repeat myself. Thank you so much for hearing us out, especially you guys. You don't have to do this, especially meeting with the Maine Art. It means a lot. I've lived in Royal Oak my whole life. I have some of my fondest memories there, seeing movies I hadn't even heard of just because it was the midnight movie. My friends and I would always go, just because it was on the big screen. It means so much more. Everyone knows your favorite movie is 10 times better with popcorn candy and the sound. So to lose that would be tragic. Also, the arts implication. Some of my best friends, who are now lost sadly, have shown art at, in the side room of the Maine Art, and it's just such a beautiful experience that I fear to be lost. I agree with some of the people that we appreciate the gesture of the iconic Maine Art, can't think of the word, but you know what I'm talking about, marquee to be held up. There are, I believe, two murals around Royal Oak, one on Catalpa, I believe, that has the iconic marquee, and to empty it out and use it as a glorified billboard is just somewhat tragic. I walk around Royal Oak all the time, and I see multiple storefronts empty and a continuous shift of restaurants, and it's, it's kind of fun to see all the new things coming, but at the end of the day, what's another couple of storefronts that are just going to change hands about five times within two years? To have something solid like a movie theater that shows iconic films and films frankly I probably wouldn't have heard of if I didn't have that theater just saddens me. So I hope that you guys reflect on everything you've heard and either work to do something different or stop it altogether. But thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
My name's George Elkind. I'm a resident of, can you all hear through the mask okay? I'm a resident of Hamtramck. I'm also a local film critic, regularly appearing in the Detroit Metro Times. I live at 2203 Florian Street in Hamtramck. You know, I probably have a larger investment in cinemas and their survival than most people do, but one of the things I like about moviegoing is that it's inherently rather democratic. There's a set cost. Anyone can walk in and, you know, experience a diverse range of experiences, you know, rests outside the bounds of their own lives, whether it's fantasy, whether it's someone who doesn't look like them. They can experience things that push them and stimulate their mind. The value of a cinema, regardless of who owns it, is something like the value of a library. It's a source of public good that's impossible to quantify or put a number on, unless you own it and want to do something like this. You know, I think this, the value of this, the Maine Art, is more than a matter of nostalgia or history. It's a matter of placemaking. It's a matter of attracting people to the city. I'm one of the, you know, metro Detroit residents who said it was the primary reason I ever come to Royal Oak. It is. The building that would go up in its place is incredibly generic and could go up in Warren or Madison Heights or anywhere else, as long as the right dollar signs affixed to the expected returns. I really couldn't tell you what defines Royal Oak and its culture and its history, if not an institution like this. And I think the range of people here to testify to its value, you know, backs my statement. I think this is also a clear case of, you know, an institution that benefits the collective of a great number of people here, within and outside of the city, who I, my understanding is that, you know, I think you all are here because you intend to serve them as volunteers. I think the benefits of this project would go to a wealthy few. Some people have cited affordability and a housing crisis as a justification for this project. That's either, that, I believe that's a misreading or a misinterpretation. No concession that's substantial to affordability has been mentioned to this project. And the desire has changed from the initial proposal to include more office space and less housing. So I think it would do little to remedy that problem. The cinema, regardless of its ownership, has long provided a form of public good that this project simply can't replicate. Right now, I feel that you're at a crossroads, and you can preserve something that you'll never, ever be able to recover. And there are many, many options for doing so, whether it's a civically owned theater, a nonprofit run cinema, even something in the building, though I think that would be the wrong call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have I already lost five seconds? Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard, and I'm going to primarily address Mr. Jonah, the developer. It's relevant to what's appropriate for that corner. When you think of maximizing product, profits, profits, does that always have to link with dollars and cents? I'd like the Jonas to consider creating a legacy site for themselves, bringing something to Royal Oak at the same time as a positive recognition for themselves. Instead of just another, in undistinguished mid to high-rise building in a downtown that studies, some of them at least show, don't, doesn't really need more retail or apartment space, a restoration and repurposing of the 1941 Maine Art Theater would enhance the city's appeal to diverse local audiences and at the same time showcase the Jonah name positively. I have noticed a lot of Jonah names as I drive around metro Detroit, and they are all pretty ordinary, not offensive, but certainly not praiseworthy architectural design. My mind says meh. The Maine Theater holding, building, on the other hand, is a 1940's treasure. Going into it reminded me a lot of the theater my father and uncle owned when I was growing up in a small Ohio town, and today that theater has been renovated and serves as a community center. Here in Royal Oak, I can see the Jonah family preserving the theater building, keeping one movie theater, creating several performance event areas that will draw in people interested in the arts and culture, possibly, you know, complimenting the stagecrafters' work, making it a hub. The Maine Art Theater and its surrounding land, named after its developer, would stand as a forever monument to those developers, the Jonah family. The area around the historic building could tastefully be redesigned to encourage people to linger in good weather. Because the area is a brownfield, it would make some sense when cleaning it up to put in a layer of underground parking and have the surface area as a large plaza. It seems unlikely it would lose money. It would continue for the foreseeable future to generate downtown visitor traffic as well as prestige for the Jonas. There's already a nonprofit group, which could be the nucleus for its operations, modeling their work on the volunteerism at the old Redford Field Theater. A local developer who has done a decent job of doing construction, generates high finance profits, and still supports historical preservation is Dan Gilbert. He is regarded highly. Compare that with Manny Maroon, who is apparently totally about dollars and cents. The Jonah family, by creating a legacy site at the northeast corner of Maine and 11 Mile, would align more with Gilbert, who clearly values community.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask you to rip that up.
Yep, I am. My question is, again, does maximizing profits always have to link simply with dollars and cents?
Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. I'm as old as the theater, lived in Royal Oak as long, and a downtown commercial property owner. My initial concern was regarding the PUD onsite parking capacity and the possible impact on the city parking structure south of 11 Mile that is intended for public parking in the Henry Ford Medical Center. I observed the PUD parking utilization at 3:00 PM and 9:30 PM on two Saturdays and a Sunday. Available surface parking ranged between three and 17 spaces daytime, three to 16 spaces at night. Valet parking station stacked, that meant park was zero to eight, that means there were zero to eight cars parked at the valet station, not pushed over into parking. Unfortunately, there's a definite public resistance to structure parking. The PUD parking structure on Sunday was, excuse me, the PUD parking structure on Sunday was full on the first floor, 50% on the second floor, and empty on floors three through five. Similarly, the city 11 Mile structure on Saturday was empty on floors three through seven. In contrast, surface parking lots downtown at Sixth and Main, Seventh and Main, Sixth and Center were all filled to capacity at 9:30 PM on Saturday night, April 2. Theater, previously, theater patrons were observed parking in the surface lot and walking to the theater when there were 233 public surface, surface parking spaces prior to the city structure being built. And in conclusion, the concern that theater persons will use the city parking lot, parking structure south of 11 Mile is reduced now that it is no longer a surface lot. However, the fee structures between the city and PUD parking structures must be coordinated since the city provides two hours free parking. My point is, I'm concerned that people will park for two hours free rather than paying for parking on the PUD site. Secondly, we need to engage in a campaign to reduce public resistance to structure parking. Don't know how we do that. It will benefit the PUD and the city parking structures. Third, updating the parking, we need to update the parking study for the 11 Mile parking structure to reflect the change of use from office to medical.
Bill, I'm gonna have to ask you to rip it up.
Yep. And that's the base. I've got reasons why. I'll skip that. And last point is, we need to go back to conventional parking meters on the city streets. My, I have three tenants downtown and others we've talked to. Everybody is having a problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Kevin Maher. I am a board member of Friends of the Maine Art. And as clearly evident this evening, our primary focus is the saving of the Maine Art building and what it stands for. But equally important secondary focus is to save the essence of the Maine as a cultural icon. So with that in mind, since the North Maine plans were filed, we have been meeting with an architect to utilize a fraction of the 9,300 square feet designed for retail space on the first floor, to the point that you mentioned earlier, building a theater actually under the marquee. Should you vote to approve the destruction of the Maine Art as it stands today and approve the amendment to the PUD, we hope that in the interest of culture in Royal Oak, in support of the Royal Oak Master Plan, and in deference to the thousands of supporters of the Maine Art Theater, that you include in your approval a recommendation that every effort be made by the developer to include a boutique cinema in the new development at North Maine Square. We are more than happy to continue to work with the Jonah Company and with North Maine to build a sustainably, community-based, nonprofit theater in that location that will be additive to the cultural life of Royal Oak and to the betterment of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Derek Peters, 540 Leroy Ferndale. Less than a year ago, this community gathered under the iconic Maine Art marquee to share the love for the space. Everyone loved the films, and there's nowhere else that we could, we felt that we could, you know, appreciate our past-present showings of movies there. Over that time, we have grown in membership and capacity and applying, and applied for a 501(c)(3) status as our groundwork for the future of the Maine Art. And we believe that the future of the Maine Art Theater to be a regional hub for arts focused on fully sustainable and nonprofit community-run model that will serve as a centerpiece for downtown Royal Oak and the cultural community of southeast Michigan, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and all the other surrounding communities. Alternatively, we do not believe that the plan submitted for your consideration to demolish the cultural and historically significant Maine Art Theater will result in a brighter future for Royal Oak. Quite the opposite. We do realize, or we noted that the Royal Oaks in March 2022 vacancy rates for offices has been at 18.3% and retail at 13.9% vacancy. That's four times what is considered healthy for our city. So adding more to the already high vacancy rates would not help us out at all. Ultimately, approving the demolition of the historic Maine Art Theater and replacing it with a ubiquitous condo development will strip this community of character and culture. We ask that you deny the plans as proposed or work with our foundation, our organization to do something that, that, that will help us believe in the Maine Art. Thank you for your time, and good luck with your choice.
Thank you.
I'm Jill Greenwald. I live at 607 Ninth Street in Royal Oak. And all kinds of comments tonight have been made that I totally agree with. Do I want to see the Maine demolished? No. Do I accept that that might happen? Yes. But hopefully, we'll have a place in that building. I'm speaking because I, you said, if you've heard your comments already made, don't make them, but I'm a Royal Oak senior, and I've lived here 55 years, and as far as I know, I'm not going anywhere soon. We now have an Aging in Place Task Force. And an important part of Aging in Place is having quality, art, and culture nearby. I don't want to drive a long distance to have those needs met, and I don't think other seniors do either. And if we really, really want to make seniors comfortable in our city, then that has to be a consideration too. I think our neighbors, neighborhoods are still really vibrant, and I'd like to see the city stay vibrant, and we need the Maine in some form. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phyllis Salter, North Lafayette. I'm cutting this in half even though I think three minutes is a travesty, but tonight I'll give you this. Many of Royal Oak's treasures have been lost in the past several years. They can be commercial, residential, any structure that represented the amenities and the character once found throughout the city, and space too. We certainly have lost a lot of that. We are turning our neighborhoods into Levittown for the wealthy. Where do we got to go to get culture? The Farmington Civic Theater is owned by the city, a small city willing to do this, and they don't even have the shows that we had. We had London Theater, all kinds of things that you're not going to see. The lobby of the Maine was singular in character, gathering the people of all genres were, was invigorating. Staff requirements could be very low, maybe one for the tickets, one for the popcorn. A third may be necessary if those outside partaking in the social district get too close. It's time to listen. I think we're getting closer to what I like to call Gotham City if we keep putting these things up, and please don't deprive us of what's left. Thank you.
My name is Ed Icoff, and I live in 350 North Maine, adjacent to the property that's proposed to be redeveloped. I would like to reiterate a couple comments that were made tonight briefly. One, people need to remember that the Landmark Theater walked away from the site. They were not evicted, you know, by the owners of the property. It is private property. They do have the choice to do with it what they would like. There is a PUD in place, and while five stories is not the desired thing that I would like to necessarily see at that I would like to necessarily see adjacent because we do have other residents in our building whose views will be affected. I would however much rather see a five-story building than a nine or a 12-story building which would totally block the visibility. I think that the proposal that's been made has been responsible. I think that there have been conversations that have taken place between the developer and the adjacent property owners, including the May North Lofts. We have voiced some of our concerns which are making sure that the lighting is appropriate so that we don't get lighting coming into our residences. We have asked that that outside dumpster be gotten rid of and because they do have an opportunity to have the trash fully enclosed in the building. And we would like to see that maintained as part of the property. And I think the suggestion about some type of walking path to, as an indication of where people can traverse between the two buildings is important. Something that's not on the plan and something I hope does not get on the plan is more benches because we do have a problem in the city with homeless. And that vespal today has been more used for homeless people to sleep, urinate, you know, collect garbage than it has been to be used as an entrance even when the main theater was open for business. So I would, again, in a perfect world, we would like to see something a little bit smaller. But again, a five-story development is much better than 12. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Capizzo, 863 Vanoy, Madison Heights. When the Landmark closed, I assumed that the Landmark owned it and now I find out it's owned by these people. This has raised several questions. How did they come to acquire it? I'd ask you to see the lease between Landmark and Jonah. And can you still ask them questions now? And appropriate.
Might, but it's your turn to talk.
Ask them why they acquired it and then didn't maintain it. As that man said, it's dilapidated. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Margaret Schmaltz. I live at 2706 Shenandoah Drive, Royal Oak. I've been there for 30 years. I was raised in Royal Oak. I grew up on 4043 Normandy Road, same street where Marshall Fredericks, our sculptor that created the Spirit of Detroit and our statue here in the city. And my family lived there till I was eight and we moved to Birmingham. And I moved back here, I'm a single mom. I moved back here to raise my son because I wanted him to have the childhood that I had. And I've just slowly watched as we turned into a Birmingham. And I didn't like Birmingham. I, it kind of ruined my childhood. And I don't want to see that happen to other folks. My son's out of the house now. I want to stay here. I'm now looking at property in Midtown. Because everything's leaving, everything's gone. I'm a musician. I can count two, three places that have live music now. We're losing everything that I came back here for. I respect what you're trying to do. I respect that you're even spending time talking with us to try and participate. But I also ask you to listen to our emotions and how we feel so deeply about this. It's just part of us and we just want you to. I just, I hear that it's kind of, I kind of feel like this is being fast-tracked. I just want to see some time thought about this. Can we take some time? That's really all we want to see here is some time to work with these folks. We appreciate what you've got to do and we respect you. But I just want to have that time. It's just important to me. I talked to my son, my son works at Fifth Avenue. He said everybody goes downtown. He said they don't get their crowd until late at night. They come home for a nightcap. That's Fifth Avenue. Wasn't like that before. I don't want to be a chain store town. I didn't move back here to be a chain store, to live in a chain store town. I don't want to see a Lululemon. I want Encarnito. I want the stuff that we used to have. Just as one small item, I walked through the area a couple of summers ago and there was a very loud HVAC coming out from the north building from there. If you build another building there, that noise is going to bounce off those buildings and it's, no one's going to want to live in that building. So I ask you to look at that. The HVAC coming out of the north building. It's going to be a noise trap in there. So it's going to affect the quality of your units.
Thank you, but now I guess you wrap it up.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Wonderful to be here with all of you. My name is Rick Repinski, 37317 Pocahontas, Clinton Township, Michigan. Which in a sense makes me a little bit of an outsider of Royal Oak. You'll forgive me, but I'm also a Michigander, right? So I think the perspective I can bring here is one who comes to the city. And I, I think especially being here, going on 9:00 PM with all you wonderful people speaks to that. Because I think for many of us are here because we align on what to do about this building, why we're here to do it. And also I think to myself, the more pressing thing between now and work, what we're going to do after this meeting. I for one would love to see a movie. Be nice to have a place to do that, especially as someone who in Clinton Township, I find myself faced with a very critical dilemma and that's boredom. You know, David Foster Wallace wrote extensively about it. That authors like Kurt Garg, Sartre, Nietzsche, you know, they're looking at things like anxiety and problems of dread. And today I find myself really just facing the problem of boredom. About, you know, if I were to move into a city like Royal Oak, maybe I could go to a Lululemon. Maybe I could go to a Kmart, all those other stores that are perhaps more popular. And yet I'd still find myself terribly bored. I think there's, from what I understand, 40 cities on Facebook that feel the same way. Between now and work, the problem of boredom could easily be resolved by us going to see a movie, having some stimulating conversation. A little bit more than tights at Lululemon. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Colleen Soraco and I live at 92 West Ferry Street in Detroit. And I also wanted to share my kind of outsider perspective. So in Detroit, we have lots of art house cinemas. We have Cinema Detroit, we have the DFT, Cinema Lamont. There's probably other ones I don't even know about. And for as long as I've been into cinema, I've always been going to the Main Art Theater the most. And there are lots of reasons for that. There's, none of those smaller theaters just have that expansive feeling of sitting in like rows of seating. And a lot of the art house cinemas are just like couches and like chairs like in somebody's backyard. So it really felt like an event. When I was in grad school, I literally used to go there Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. And I saw every movie that they offered. And it was like going to church for me. It was like one of the only places where you couldn't check your phone. And that was just so sacred to me. Sorry. So when I found out that it was closed, I got really upset. And when I found this group of people that were rallying around it, I became so heartened by that to know that other people felt the same. So I just want to share that perspective as someone outside of the city. This was something that brought me in every weekend, almost every day of every weekend for a really long time. And I was actually a server at Bastogne on Fifth and Main Street. And another thing, you know, all of the customers were coming in from other cities too. And they wanted dinner and something else. So they would often be going to the movie as well. People that worked in the restaurant, we would go out to see the midnight movies after our shifts. Like it was just such an integral part of my experience growing up and of so many people in the city. And, you know, you've just got a lot of outsiders like me that will make that trip. And I really hope I get to keep doing that in some capacity. And even if this demolition progress goes on, I don't think you're going to get rid of us. So we'll find something to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am probably going to regret this in the morning when I wake up. But I thought I'd come up here and talk anyways.
You need to introduce yourself.
I will, I'm getting there. This is all part of a planned speech. I'm a trained politician, I know how to do it. My name is Jim Allison. I've lived in this city since the day I was born. I just had my 70th birthday in January. I have a lot of nostalgia about the city of Royal Oak. I can remember going to Hockey Gilly Shoes when I was a kid. A number of people remember Hockey Gilly Shoes and buy my Red Ball Jets. But what you probably didn't realize is before it was Hockey Gilly Shoes, it was a movie theater. It was one of the first movie theaters in the city of Royal Oak. I practice reflective nostalgia, go back and remember the good things. I do not practice restorative nostalgia, going back and trying to resurrect and rebuild what was there. I have very fond memories of the main theater, going on the Saturday matinees and picking my gum off the carpeting and all the great stuff like that. One of my favorite memories from the main theater was the first wedding I did as mayor. For those who don't know, I spent 16 years at the planning commission level. I spent 13 years as a mayor and four years as a city commissioner. And I'm now finishing up six years as a state rep. So I've been involved in this city and its lifeblood for the last 30 years. So I've seen a lot. But one of my greatest memories from the main theater is when I was elected mayor gave me the ability to perform weddings. So the first wedding I did the day after I was sworn in was in the lobby of the main theater. The couple met at the main theater. That's where they wanted to get married. So we showed up. We were one person short for a witness, so we grabbed the kid selling popcorn and he became the witness. But it all worked and those are all the little things you remember. I'm hearing that the people tonight, there are two separate problems we're facing here. The loss of the theater building itself, the physical structure of the building and the ability to organize and have movies, art movies shown like they always did. To me, it's two entirely separate problems. I don't think restorative nostalgia is in line here to rebuild or try to save a building that is old and would take a lot of money to refurbish it just so that we can practice our nostalgia and watching movies in it. I think the efforts from the main theater group would be better formed. And I think they can get a lot of help with trying to find another venue. I have talked to Peter Provenzano, the chancellor out at OCC. OCC has a beautiful auditorium that most people in this city aren't aware of. And it's not used and he'd love to share it with the public. It would be great for the theater people to try to work out a deal with OCC. I'd be happy to facilitate those discussions. But to sit here, I'm getting there, Gary. Give me a little latitude. But again, we're facing the problem here at the planning. Your guys' job is to judge a building and its design and whether it fits into the city and what it's supposed to do. That's your job. Your job is not to make decisions about trying to save movies or theaters or anything like that because the property owner has rights and you've got to uphold those rights. So I would suggest that, you know, you adjust your plan. I'm a supporter of the plan. I think it's a good plan. And I think as far as the main theater folks, I'd like to see them organize or continue to organize and try to find a solution to their problem of showing movies. And I think it's out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patsy Regio, 1403 Smith Avenue, Royal Oak. And we've had such wonderful people talk. I know Mr. Cullen was mayor at one time, Mr. Ellison. I worked for pulmonary doctors and I did a hology, grandma job. And Mr. Ellison, one of your grandsons was a beggar. I was doing a grandma job before the COVID. So anyway, thank you for listening to everybody. I, I believe the nostalgia has to go, but I will give you a little history. First of all, the lady from the women's club was great. The lady that said, think out of the box is great. I graduated, I told you before, and I told the commission, I've graduated in 1962 from Don Darrell. So I've been here forever. I'm seven years older than Mayor Ellison. So I believe all these people. And one thing I heard recently was great leaders don't always have to do what's written on paper. Not breaking the law, but we've had a lot of petitioners for other things in the city. You don't have to, you have to consider all the petitioners. I went to see the Blob at the main theater when I was about 11, met my kindergarten friend, it was 25 cents. When I was in high school, my boyfriend lived in Huntington Woods and he took me to the senior prom and his uncle owned the main theater. But that's, we have to think with our brains, but I hope you do consider from the hearts. I've always said that in front of you guys. I know you have a big job, but really, my one daughter's friend about when they were in their twenties, produced a movie, an independent movie that I went to and saw. And I have a good memory, but I remember the theme of that movie. But it was excellent. We need to keep the arts. We need to keep the main theater there. And it's not just from nostalgia. It's so important for the city. We need this. We need historical things. Like you need to tell your children, this is what I did when I was a child. This is what my grandparents did. You need something. So anyway, thank you for your time and thank you for all these wonderful people speaking up for our city. And, you know, it's for the people, by the people. I hope you're listening and hearing and hearing and listening from everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nikki Kushner, 310 La Prairie, Ferndale. I just, I guess my question for Royal Oak is who are you trying to attract to the city? Because if you take away the culture that is in the city, you know, I think with the arts, it just brings a lot of diversity and different kinds of people that are going to be coming to the city. Different kinds of people that are going to want to make their home here. Different people, you know, are going to want to come and visit from all over Michigan. You know, like other people have said, you know, I've lived all over Michigan, Plymouth, Royal Oak, Utica, Ferndale. And I've always come back to Ferndale, or to Royal Oak to come to the cinema. And not just me, but lots of different friends who are involved in the arts. And when you have music and culture, you bring a lot of different people. And so again, who are you trying to attract to live here? If you put up this building, you know, it's not those people.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robert Brenner. I live at 1102 North Pleasant. When I moved here, one of the things I liked about the place we bought was that we could walk to the main theater. Seems to me putting up yet another utterly generic building, the lack of thought about things, such simple things as trash handling and pedestrian traffic. What I think is poor setback for a building of that size. The lack of green space, failure to change the amount of paved space, the building more of things that we actually can't fill now, willingness to destroy a cultural icon. All of these tell me the project's not ready to move forward and should be denied.
I see the line is diminished. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none, going once, twice. I'm going to close the public comment and I'm going to turn this back to the commissioners for discussion. Further questions of Mr. Twing or the petitioner team?
Do we want to allow the applicant to respond to any of this at all? I mean, in the past, we had done that.
I will ask the petitioner if they wish to make some further comment.
We're most interested in the questions you have. So as those come up, we'll be glad to answer them. I do want to just point out two factual issues for your consideration. One, the theater closed because Landmark left. They're the, I believe, second largest independent movie theater chain in the country. After that, this properly, which property was readily available, no one, no one in the industry expressed any interest. We did have some brief interest from one theater chain. And I think that speaks volumes. The entire movie industry is in somewhat of an upset right now. All of us here know that you can get almost any movie you want at home. We know that there still is a market. But with respect to this particular building, that is not the case any longer. And their numbers were going down dramatically even before COVID. And subsequently, Landmark decided to pull out. The second thing that I want to mention is so it isn't lost and I hope it isn't lost on you. As has been said by members of the Friends Board, we met on two occasions. We did not accept their offer for a lease of the building. We did not accept their offer for a lease of the building. I don't think it's necessary to go into that decision-making process. That's a decision of the landlord, as they would with any tenant, evaluate the risk and reward and that type of, those types of issues. However, at the last meeting, we were asked if we would consider a small venue inside our building. And we said yes, but they needed to submit some type of plan so we know exactly the parameters we're talking about. As I think it was Kevin mentioned from the board, they have not finalized that plan yet. So we await that plan, and then we'll make an evaluation of that request. We also have offered, through Paul Glantz at Imagine Theater, that he is more than willing to show a main art film series or independent film series. There are certainly other opportunities in Royal Oak. If it's so chosen for smaller venues, and I think our state representative just mentioned OCC. We admire the passion, we admire the interest. I think at the end of the day, somewhere in Royal Oak will be that possibility and that opportunity. But we, as I stated, await a schematic plan for part of the site on the first floor to evaluate. And when we do receive it, we will evaluate it and evaluate it fairly.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Cohen just sat down, but any further questions for him? All right, well, then I will bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Ms. Bicki.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of different comments and observations. My perspective is founded on both international experience and international development work, as well as recent studies on placemaking, economic development, livability, sustainability, walkability, et cetera. And one of the key features of a dynamic resilient community are places you want to go to, you want to walk to, you want to see in your community. And so for my first comment, I would disagree with the state representative. That it's not just nostalgia about a physical structure, it's also about our history going backwards and forwards. And I've worked in a lot of different places, but also lived in Washington DC, Boulder, Colorado, Seattle, Washington, London, UK, Krakow, Poland, Warsaw, Poland, where Warsaw, Poland rebuilt their entire central city after it was bombed in World War II. Why? Because it had a connection to the past, and it brought them to the future. And those structures are important. My observation of this structure here and this main theater is the owners are smart to own a cultural icon that they do. And again, the opportunity to incorporate that physical building into your building or build with pylons, a building around it, where you would have an interaction between an artistic venue with your venue would be, in my opinion, smart on the building side, but also because, again, if you look at statistics, retail is completely going down, much more so than artistic venues. And for placemaking and places that have a shortage of activity in their retail and other entities, the number one recommendation is to have dynamic activities like art venues, interactive venues, community spaces. And I agree with others here that we observe that we have a lot of empty spaces, and we have to rethink, because retail's not going back, it's been declining since the 1920s. And the US has six times more retail per capita than most European countries, and so it's just too much to sustain, and so it has to be thought of differently. I'll leave that as my opening comments, but I would, oh, the other thing about this physical structure as is, even without the main theater, I've mentioned this many times. We have a wind tunnel issue with having all flat buildings. We have a problem on 11 mile for safety in the sidewalk width. And so those features also would cause me a lot of concern, just in its mass. That's my opening comment.
Thank you. Other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Gandino.
So the notion of private property rights comes up often, I think, in front of this body. And for me, it's a separate issue from the very passionate individuals that came out tonight with regards to the building that currently exists and its current use. Our role is to really look at what's been presented to us today. And the notion of private property rights gives property owners by right the ability to do what they'd like with their property within the regulations that exist. The planned unit development is a little bit of a different animal in the sense that it exists to have products be brought forward that may not fit within the regulations, that may still bring benefit to the community based on the merits of what it's bringing. So for me, it is a little bit of a different issue in terms of having to evaluate what's been brought forward to us based on the PUD regulations, separate from the, again, the very passionate outcry and support for the current main art theater that's there. It is still a non-operating vacant building that's there. But again, it's a separate issue with regards to what's in front of us today as it relates to an amendment to a PUD that exists. So I think we just need to make sure, I'll make sure that we, I guess, weigh that very carefully.
Other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, let's go, Mr. Klooster.
Yes, so I would like to just start briefly by thanking the public for their respect and their expediency during the public comments. This is probably one of the largest audiences that we've seen, and we've gotten through public comment by nine o'clock. So I thank you, everyone, for your respect in that manner. I think a lot of great points were brought up by the public as far as the value of culture. I would urge that that value be discussed as part of the ongoing development. I think a very strong business sense can be made for understanding what is part of a larger development. I think there is very strong evidence and research that supports cherry-picking your tenants, for lack of a better term, to fit the culture of the building, to support the uses within the building, whether it be residence, office, retail, et cetera. Find a good cultural fit, and it makes very good business sense. I think there is a strong opportunity to incorporate a lot of the, a lot of the independent art-based culture that Royal Oak has historically had into this as a targeted component of the development. And I would urge the public to continue to work with the developers, and the developers to continue to work with the public to find a way to make this development speak to that historically significant arts culture. That being said, it is private property, and the owner of that private property has a right to develop that private property that they purchased to make them money or provide some sort of asset to their portfolio that they included in it. I think we are, as a body, required to evaluate what's in front of us, as Mr. Gandino has recently put, and evaluate it against a criteria to make sure that it fits within the city without doing harm to the city. I understand the concern of removing a cultural and historic icon as feeling like personal harm. And unfortunately, what we're looking at now is a vacant structure. Like I said, I would continue, I would ask that both parties continue to work together to find a solution that makes good business sense for all parties, as well as a strong cultural sense for the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas.
So I sit here, I wear two hats. I'm a city commissioner, and I'm today a planning commissioner. And those two bodies have different roles. And Mr. Gandino summarized this. We, as planning commissioners, are obliged to consider proposals brought before us and to act on the proposals that are in front of us. And I'll give an example here. Imagine a landlord, a commercial landlord, and they are negotiating with two prospective tenants. And they choose one tenant over the other. And then they come to the planning commission with a site plan with this tenant that they have agreed in a contract to. The unsuccessful, imagine if the unsuccessful tenant came before us and said, "No, we want to lease that building, the landlord should lease it to us." We, as a planning commission, can't make those decisions. We have to consider what is in front of us. And I think that's our role tonight. The city, putting on my city commission hat, I think Royal Oak is, does an extraordinary job of attracting arts and culture to our city. And we've talked a lot about movies today, but I will remind you that we have the Royal Oak Music Theater, we have Mark Rutley's Comedy Castle, we have Stage Crafters, we have the Imagine Theater right across the parking lot. We have festivals throughout the year that bring arts and culture to our communities. So let's not lose sight of the fact that we are a thriving cultural destination. And I love the passion that we've heard from folks here about this. And I am confident that you will be able to convert that passion into bringing the art that you love to the people of Royal Oak, to the people of our region, that you'll find a way to do that. And perhaps that will take place through the development that is proposed here. By all means, keep negotiating, and I do hope you'll keep the door open for them. But I do, I am confident that you will find a way to continue to bring this art form to our city. But the decisions we make here at the table today have to be based on the facts in front of us.
Other comments?
Sure, gladly weigh in, thank you. To the topic that we currently are discussing, I have an agree with Ms. Douglas that this is a great cultural city. The main art theater has been a part of that for a long time. And I really would love to see it stay. Not on the table for me to decide that tonight, though. Mr. Klooster said something that interested me just now, when he said about the private-public and to continue the discussion. But the public includes as well the city government, right? Like, that's part of public, and there's private-public partnerships that happen in the world sometimes. That's also not on the table for me to decide tonight. I don't get to join that discussion, other than to say I recommend to the city government to join that discussion with the private developers and the citizens and people who have an interest in this property and its cultural significance. But all I can do is recommend that the city government do that. As a planning commissioner, not at that table. As a planning commissioner, I want to just turn the corner real quick and talk about the plan that's in front of us and point out a couple of things I didn't hear, that I would be interested to just, Mr. Cohen and developer and so forth. I didn't hear anything about solar power, for instance, right? Like, I did hear the phrase that it would be net zero because the current, in terms of stormwater, I think is the context in which you use that. Because the current site is, you know, so much concrete and solid. But I wonder, just because changing hard surface for hard surface, is there anything with a green roof or any other sort of technology that's available to us in the development world today, in a world with rising water, where we can do better than that zero, right? I didn't hear a discussion about an attempt at that, and I'd be interested to see if there's a way to talk about that as planning commissioners to recommend to the site plan, solar power, green roof. And then, I'd also be interested in this discussion about attainable, assessable housing, right? Like, the market value on that corner is great in terms of housing. That's kind of my expertise, I work in real estate. But, you know, we've said as a commission before to petitioners, can you do something with, making some of the units attainable, right? Like, a little more affordable percentage of the units. Not all of them, not even half of them, but a small percentage of them. Those are things that are, I am at that table, I get to talk about those things. So as a planning commission, I would be happy to look at the site plan that's in front of us and talk about those sorts of things as well. I wish there was a way to not build instead of the theater, but build on top of the theater, like literally. You know, that would be interesting to me. I don't get to make that decision. If I was involved in that, I might think, maybe not the whole theater. There's the original portion of it that's probably only about 65 feet wide, and then there's the addition. So if I was to try to build over it, I might think about demolishing a good portion of it and build over some of it. And then if I was to try to save a cultural gem like the main art, I might think beyond cinema in terms of redeveloping it to include, I heard somebody talk about live music and lamenting the number of venues in our city and theater. I heard somebody bring up theater, you know, Shakespeare in the Park. In the summertime's great, Shakespeare in the main might be really cool in winter, I don't know. But those are ideas that I don't get to be at the table. But my first point about public-private is more than, you know, this group of private owners and this particular group of public interests, and also the city government is also public. So if there's a way for city government, though I know that's a very complicated discussion, not for me. But I do have the interest in seeing more about solar, more about green roof, more about attainable housing units in this particular site plan. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's my turn. So here's, I'm going to start out by saying this, yes, the, all the comments we heard, we could probably sit here all night and talk about this. I know we don't, but want to do that, but I mean, it's a fascinating issue. The comments about what culture and the arts do for a community and placemaking and all that. And by the way, just some background here, I'm a lawyer now, but I spent almost 20 years as a photographer. So, you know, I was hanging out with the artists and all that, and so this is really important to me. And when I moved to Royal Oak, you know, you're right, there were other things. Memphis smoke came and gone, I liked to go there. We lose things sometimes, and it hurts, it does. And, you know, it's almost like Tiger Stadium, you know, you can even stand to know that it was getting torn down. So I 100% feel all of that. But comments are right, we got to stick with what our job is. But I'm also a lawyer now, and so I read the procedures, and I am not convinced what we didn't do wasn't a preliminary site plan review. And the reason I say that is because a preliminary site plan needs a public hearing. We just had a public hearing, a final site plan does not. So I think we just had, I think we're following the procedures, and I do think this is a preliminary site plan, which we have some issues with. You just heard Mr. Curtis. We have an issue with the open areas on 11 mile. We have asked for more sustainable features. I mentioned the EV charging stations. We have unresolved issues on the north side of the building that are not included here. I think there's some questions. And also, I would say this. I don't know why we can't get to the very best solution here, I don't know exactly what that is. But I'll tell you what, I know Kevin Bedison can design something in that building if there's an energetic entrepreneur who knows how to run a business who can make it happen. And that's, by the way, that's how it happened in the first place. They weren't, you know, the Royal Oak Theater and all those other places are private enterprises. It's going to have to be a private enterprise, more than likely, somebody who's got the know-how and the knowledge. And if they can meet with these people, I know they can design something good in there and make the marquee mean something. So those are my comments, I can't make a motion, but turn to my fellow planning commissioners. Mr. Klooster.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Twing procedurally. This site would be required to meet stormwater requirements from the engineering department?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, okay. Other comments, questions, statements? Ms. Bicki.
I think I would like to ask the petitioners directly, I mean, what consideration was given to potentially refurbishing that building and including it in your building, and incorporating them together? And if there was any, I'd like to hear some comment on that, please.
In planning, we did look at a few different options. It just was not feasible to keep a building there and build over a big dome roof and make the building viable. It, we looked at it a couple of different ways. It wasn't viable to, we felt it wasn't viable for a long-term solution there. There are a lot of intricacies inside of a There are a lot of intricacies inside of a building that, functioning-wise, including roofs, AC and so forth, and it, you would push the building up so high that this would be a very, very tall building. And it also impacts the parking and so forth. It wasn't viable on that side of it. I can talk about the sustainability of the building. We are building this building, we would like to build this building as efficient as possible. A few things that we've taken into consideration was not just closing this building off, even the office has balconies and is able to bring in fresh air, which would help out the running of the air conditioning and so forth, and bring in fresh air rather than utilizing the systems. Solar panels are a tricky question there, and we want to be respectful to our neighbors. It does reflect a lot of light, we are open to it, but there are big reflections, and we do have a taller building next door to us that we want to be respectful to. We don't want a glare, glares going into their living rooms and so forth. We are open to looking at it, but we want to be respectful to them. The building is all LED, high-efficiency, all LED lighting, high-efficiency plumbing, low E glass, so forth, so it is, in our minds, a very efficient building to build. So we are looking at water cooling towers, which are more efficient to run, of course, for AC. Thank you.
Is that another hand, Ms. Bicki?
Just to follow up comment, I mean, again, the deconstruction, reconstruction, recycling, all of those things, again, perhaps not the purview here, but something to consider with such an important, I think, cultural asset. Oh, and the other one I wanted to say is, again, reading through all of your documents, you kind of tagged in and said there's something about pedestrian, it's being, you know, pedestrian-friendly, there's like a slight comment about it, but again, I'd like to remind us that we're in a pedestrian-friendly area, people walk to these venues and such, and so, again, the walkability, the bike parking, things like that, this is not just a drive from the highway and come into Royal Oak, we have 60,000 people, many of whom are in close distance and other communities than biking distance and such, that also wasn't considered, I think, in the development of the building. Bike parking, access, not just considering people coming by car.
And if I could just follow up on that, one of the design criterias is pedestrian and vehicular safety provisions, and we asked about that, but it's not on the plans. Comments, questions, motion on this?
I'm sorry, what do you, what did you mean by that?
770-100A1D, pedestrian vehicle, vehicular safety provisions is one of the residential design standards that apply here. It was one of the things, I went through the plans, I asked a bunch of questions there, that's one of the things that I raised because I didn't see it on here.
But it's not required?
Yeah, it says right here. 770-100.
Okay.
There's design standards.
Okay.
And I didn't mention bike racks, that's not on here, but, anyway, so just some thoughts. I think the plan, overall, I'm going to pipe up here, I kind of like the plan, I think that it can be improved, I think that, I think that there should be EV charging stations, like I said, it's one of the things we can place conditions here, I think they ought to, I think they ought to add some. I think that, again, I don't, I'm not particularly, I think there may be another solution for facing 11 Mile, and so, that's all. Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I didn't bring it up yet because you already had, I think, about the 11 Mile side of things and all of the surface parking on that corner already, right? Across the street is a public parking structure that has surface-level parking, before that's parking lots that, you know, right outside our window here.
Right.
Across the street over there towards the west is a condominium building with surface parking, behind the Leo's, Conys', there's a, do development with surface parking, and that topic concerns me as well about our streetscape being parking lots ultimately. And this is such a premier corner, so I'm not sure, because this is outside of what I do, on how to address that, but I do think it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Guntina.
So I just want to make the point that we need to be very careful with some of the contingencies that we've been talking about. While I agree with many of the suggestions that the other commissioners have brought up with respect to ways that the project could be better, it's not up to us to design their project for them. I think if many of the things that we think would make the project better were important to them, it would be a part of the project that was brought before us today. So we have to be very careful with the discussion around contingencies that we may want to include in any approval with not designing their project for them. They designed the project, they've submitted something, and there's an application in front of us, and we just need to be very careful with what we may add to it or want to add to it, that sort of thing.
Okay, I appreciate that, we should ask counsel. We can add conditions for PUD, true?
You can't add conditions to the PUD that are consistent with what the standards that are listed in the PUD section and those that are bootstrapped to the PUD provisions from elsewhere in the zoning code. But at the same time, I do want to, you know, reiterate what Mr. Guntina had just said, that, you know, there is a certain limit, you can't go too far and start going down the process of redesigning the entire project for them, and that's, it's a delicate balance, and I just want to just agree to the extent that, yes, you can impose some standards to address those criteria that are listed, but going down the path of arguably redesigning may be crossing too far.
Thank you. I'm going to say that everything that I brought up, I think, fits into the health, safety, and welfare and master plan criteria that we talked about, that's my opinion, of course. And, you know, the master plan, the future land use for this site is multi, or mixed use, it's designed to be mixed use. So the mixed-use, you know, facility here is not objectionable, but it's a pretty important corner, and all those other things that I brought up, I think, are legitimate concerns for this commission, that's my opinion. Motion, comments? It's a difficult decision here, and we've had a lot of input, and we've got a very, you know, we've got a lot of information here from the petitioner, from the public, and from our distinguished panel and our department, and so, like to see further thoughtfulness here. Mr. Klooster.
I will propose a motion to approve the PUD with the listed contingencies, as well as adding a contingency to include bicycle parking within the development.
That is the, you've added the one, okay. Any, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I do want to raise the possibility that we make the preservation of the marquee optional. I think we heard a fair amount of buzz here that people weren't interested in that, so would the table consider making that marquee item optional?
Procedurally, do I have to, could I amend my motion without going through the process of?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, can I just ask, why would it be optional?
I'm responding to the public.
All right, is it because, is it because, is it?
Okay, I withdraw it, I withdraw it.
Okay, my question was, because it seems that between now and some point in the future there might be some changes, either for, you know, that might occur, that's all, I won't...
No, never mind, I withdraw my suggestion.
I still have a procedural question around that. So typically, we will see things in front of this board that show signage items, but they're often reviewed separately as far as compliance with the sign ordinance. In this instance, this is an element that's shown on the elevation because it's not explicitly described as signage to comply with signage ordinance, are we reviewing it as part of the project that needs to comply with the signage ordinance at this time?
No, the sign ordinance requires, and you're the appeal body on the sign ordinance, so if you didn't include it as part of the PUD and they appealed it to put it in, it'd come back to you. And what I would also say is, excuse me, what I would also say is, this is a recommendation to the city commission, we're not deciding, you're not deciding this evening, you're recommending to the commission either that it be included or not be included. If it's included as a sign element, we would take it as being waived under the sign ordinance and would be allowed to put up. All other signage would still have to comply with the sign ordinance provisions. You've done that on several other PUDs or conditional rezonings where you've dealt with unique or particular signage as part of the sign package, so you have done that. All right, I think I understand... The other thing I would bring up, I've heard that you're concerned about the openness of the parking structure on the south side along 11 Mile Road, you can make it required screening in there like you've done in the past as part of the submission. If there's concern about pedestrian flow inside the site, there are several sidewalks around this site, there are sidewalks everywhere, so I'm not sure I agree that the provision that pedestrian flow isn't addressed. If you're concerned with a particular flow that isn't addressed, I would ask you to point it out, tell us where you want that corrected, because there are sidewalks around every building except the east facade of the proposed building. That was me who brought that up, and there was a comment from the petitioner that there will be an additional exit on the north side, and that was not determined where that would be, and that may make a difference about how we're going to... That exit's right there on that drawing. Is that, is that an exit? Yes. That's the stairwell to the upper floors, that's an exit and that's an exit. There is a sidewalk along this side of the building, so again, I've heard that there's pedestrian concerns here, and I would ask the planning commission, if that's the case, where do you see those? Because the only place there's not a sidewalk is along this east side of the building. Okay, after that discussion... Mr. Curtis, hold on a second here, let's have Mr. Curtis.
I just wanted to revisit the screening, some softening, if you will, on the 11 Mile, you know, which isn't, I don't think, part of the current motion on the table, right? So I heard the petitioners say they were willing to work with that concept, so should it, I'm asking kind of a body here, should that be added to the motion, do we believe some, another contingency about, I don't know how to word it, screening of some sort on the 11 Mile facade? What do you think, Mr. Klooster?
So, yes, I would like to amend my motion. So quickly, just to address the pedestrian thing, I agree with Mr. Twing, there are significant sidewalks throughout the site, pedestrian flow over to Main Street from that, or, yeah, to Main Street from that exit is right there, and there are sidewalks across curb cuts with notifications, and so pedestrian flow is, as far as that is concerned, is not a terrible concern for health, safety, and welfare for me. I would like to amend my motion to include a contingency to provide visual screening to any on-street parking along the 11 Mile frontage at the ground floor.
Mr. Curtis.
Just real quick, back to the pedestrian, I thought we were talking about not so much the north corner as it butts to Main, but the northeast corner, seeing that maybe office workers, et cetera, would be using the parking structure that's on the other side of Imagine, right? Not the 11 Mile, but, so I didn't know if that was part of the discussion we were having earlier about traversing that parking lot safely.
That was one of my concerns, yes.
I don't know if that's significant enough to bring up at this stage, or if that's just the sort of thing that gets worked out later, I don't know, but that was, in terms of health and safety, that's kind of the concern I had, is people cutting through the parking lot because it's the fastest way from that public parking to your office or something, and just having a safe walkway.
All right, so I think what, where we're at here is, Mr. Klooster's motion, I think, has been that he moved to approve the PUD site plan with the listed contingencies adding bike parking in the interior of the parking deck and screening on any open parking on 11 Mile. And was that, is that seconded with the amendments?
Actually, you don't really need to, you don't need a formal approval of amendments if the table agrees, and if there's any dissent, then you go through the motion process.
Okay.
Or Mr. Liao will tell me otherwise.
No, you're correct, I just wanted to, just to preserve the place, because there was a request made by the, by Mr. Cowan as a modification or an addition to the recommendations, I just wanted to make sure I brief that to you before you discuss or vote on the motion.
Okay, and that's the issue with the option to make the third-floor office space, correct?
Yes, they had wanted the flexibility to be able to convert that from office to, well, I'm sorry, from residential to office at their discretion, rather than having to come back, I think where Mr. Cowan is going is, they don't, if that deal works out, they don't want to have to come back to and do another amendment of the PUD.
All right, so that's probably worth a little discussion.
And then there was a second recommendation that a member of the public made, that ties in with the discussions that they've had regarding a boutique theater, so they were, so it's a general recommendation, it's not a requirement, it's just more or less to use the best efforts to leave commercial space open for boutique theater, to assist in those negotiations, what they've been doing on the private side. You don't have to include it, and you know, that's what they're doing, but if you want to, you can add it, it's just a recommendation, it's not a requirement.
All right, you've, Mr. Klooster, you've heard our attorney cite those two things, are you interested in adding those to your motion?
And so procedurally, as far as the office versus residential component goes, would that be essentially, we are allowing administrative review of those changes without requiring them to come back for amendment to the PUD? As a contingency as part of the recommendation to city commission?
And I'm going to ask for Tim for assistance for this, but there is a, an allowance for your department to do these administrative reviews, provided they're under a certain percentage of the overall, the changes.
Well, actually, converting the floor would end up with less parking, and we would administratively bless it anyway, so giving us that discretion is up to you, but we already take that discretion. All right, and what about the recommendation for best efforts, Mr. Klooster?
So I think, I think from this board, I think we've all expressed our recommendation to continue those. I think including it, it's part of the record from our recorded conversations here, adding it as a recommendation into the formal response, I have no objection to.
Okay, so that, even though Mr. Twing said it doesn't matter...
So we don't have to add the, you're saying, Mr. Twing?
Clarity, you're fine with it, there you are.
I think we should...
For clarity, you're fine with it.
It would be my thought that you might consider it, Mr. Klooster, to add that converting the third floor to office space is at the option of the petitioner.
This has been one heck of a attempt at a motion here.
I have it for you. I have it down, just, it's good.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Twing.
All right. Okay, so the answer is yes, you're adding that? Yes. Any objections to adding that?
Yes, I have no objection to adding those to the motion.
There's a whole table here, okay, so is there any other objections to adding that? Because we have, okay, seeing that...
Because we have, okay, seeing none. So the motion on the table, and I'm, Mr. Twing can help me, but I believe it's to approve the PUD site plan with the list of contingencies, with bike parking in the, in the parking area, screening on 11 Mile, option to convert to office on the third floor, and recommendation to continue to make best efforts to work, to see if we can't get some sort of a theater in there, not a requirement, but an encouragement.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the motion? Mr. Cantina?
So I just, I guess, want to reiterate the, my comments before about private property rights were very measured in the sense that what we have in front of us is a planned unit development application, which to me, and I think by design, sets a high bar for the application that's in front of us. It's designed for a project to really show the merits of why it should be considered favorably and cannot conform to regulations that already exist. And I just want everyone to, I guess, think about that very carefully before they vote in terms of whether or not this application has met that high bar. Now, this was a PUD already, there have been several amendments to the PUD, and that PUD originally gave the property certain rights to build a project. With those amendments, in the past, certain rights were given up as well. So it's still based on what's in front of us today. The bar is still quite high, in my opinion, as a planned unit development, and I just would like to make sure all the commissioners weigh that appropriately.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Curtis?
I'm sorry, could I, sorry, ask one more question about that point, Mr. Cantina? I understood in my initial question in tonight's meeting had to do with, we already have a PUD approval. It's already, so is that different than a PUD application since it's already rezoned PUD?
No, it's, the entire property is in a PUD, it's zoned that way. What you've got in front of you is a request to amend what's there. You're not changing the zoning.
Right. But that, my question has to do with the language, do we have a PUD application in front of us?
You have a request to amend a PUD in front of you.
Right. Which is probably different than an application for a PUD since it already is a PUD.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll have to follow up on that then, because the way this has been presented to us, the way I read the ordinance is that the applicant still has to demonstrate that it complies with a criteria for a PUD.
Certainly, you wouldn't amend it if it didn't.
Okay. That's the criteria. And I guess I would say, if I may pipe up here, that we heard a lot tonight, and I think that looking through the requirements, whether there's a recognizable material benefit for the use of the project in the community, I think that was demonstrated. I think the proposed type and density did not result in unreasonable increase or burden, need for burden on public services facilities. We didn't hear anything to that effect. The proposed development is consistent with the public safety, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The proposed development should, shall not result in unreasonable negative economic impact of the surrounding properties. And we did hear some people raise that issue, but I think the commissioners can find what they find myself. I think that the economic impact will be positive rather than negative overall. The proposed development shall be under a single ownership, that's what I understand that this property is. It doesn't include, my understanding is it doesn't include the Imagine site at this point in time. That's not what it shows in our, in our staff report. So I think it is under a single ownership and that it will be consistent with the goals and policies of the master plan, which of course it is because it's, future land use is mixed use. So I think that that's what I saw.
Well put.
All right. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote, and I'm going to start with Mr. Curtis, and we'll go down the table. This will be a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Clooster?
Yes.
Mr. Cantina?
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
No.
And I'm a yes, so that's one, two, three, four, four to two. So the motion passes. Congratulations. All right.
I just want to say thank you for taking all the recognition into account for the next supplemental with the City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank everyone for your time and your, and your comments. Yeah, well, yeah, good idea. We're going to take a five-minute break. I don't know who the next petitioner is probably here. We need a, I definitely need a break. Okay, I think that's everybody's.
Empty it right out, didn't it?
All right, folks, we're going to reconvene. I will now call the next item on the, on the agenda, which is the special land use and site plan, SP 22-04-06. This is the 3533 Woodward Avenue parcel. Mr. Twing, can you preview this for us?
Certainly. You identified the piece. It is, it is zone general business. It is located on the west side of Woodward Avenue or the southbound side of Woodward Avenue. The petitioner is proposing to reuse an existing building and develop the site for Polestar Electric Vehicle Dealership. Dealerships in the general business are special land use and have some requirements related to them that'd be part of your discussion this evening. I will point out that the, the site, while they're converting the building to a display area, the building inside, there won't be any vehicles on display outside, and there will be no service or repair at the site. The building's roughly 3,400 square feet of usable area, based on the parking requirement the development would require under the ordinance, 18 parking spaces. The site plan, as you see it, depicts seven. Therefore, they will also need your permission and then go to the zoning board appeals to seek that variance and obtain that variance in order to move forward if you approve the special land use this evening. The other item, if you look at the floor plan as part of the site, they are proposing an overhead door that leads out to the alley in order to get vehicles in and out. Technically, that overhead door doesn't meet the 10-foot triangle setback for visibility out into the alley, so the planning commission will have to consider whether that's acceptable or not. They are proposing safety mirrors in that area for viewing. In terms of landscaping, they are proposing some landscaping along the south side of the building as well as some, along the Woodward frontage between the parking lot and the sidewalk. And they are also proposing some trees out in the Woodward right-of-way. Those may or may not be permitted by MDOT if they have to issue a permit. There may be some objection from MDOT, so while they're depicted, at the end of the day, MDOT, it's their property, and they'll make a final decision on, on the tree. The last item is one of the things under, in terms of the size of the property, the planning commission must determine that the 13,000 square feet and 100-foot frontage is adequate to support the proposed development for this type of dealership. That's the special land use report, and I did kind of highlight the items that will be addressed as part of the site plan too, so I don't think I need to walk through those. The site plan memo also includes all the other standard contingencies.
All right. Now, there are questions for Mr. Twing before we ask for the petitioner. All right. Seeing none, is the petitioner here? Would you please approach, identify yourself, and tell us about your project and why you want the relief?
Good evening, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman. Hey, my name is Gary Landroche. I am with Lag Development, 9990 East Highland Road in Howell, Michigan, actually. We are here tonight, one of our primary objectives is to help save this historical building at 30533 Woodward. It's a, little humor there, not good taste. Polestar is a high-end luxury electric vehicle brand. It is not your typical auto dealership. I would ask for a little bit of consideration in classifying us as a dealership because it is such a unique circumstance. Polestar is, this is definitely a boutique-type store. It's really more similar to, say, the Tesla dealer that's in Somerset Mall. Car dealer, but it's, you know, we don't have all the same amenities. Without any service operation here, with no exterior vehicle sales or display, what's really unique about this, you know, Polestar being a high-end luxury brand, we are the only Polestar dealer in the Midwest. So really, 80% or more of our inquiries are from out of state. We have been averaging 35 sales a month. We're currently selling this, this brand out of our Volvo store in Farmington Hills. Any service work that we do have for Polestar is done out of our Farmington Hills store. With the 35 sales a month that we're doing, 100% have been home delivery. So that just really exemplifies the minimal customer interface that we really get in the store. This is something that's mandated by the manufacturer. They want to have a, a building, a brick-and-mortar building to have vehicles in. Our traffic, our impact and use of the site, I know we need a waiver for the parking spaces, but we're, we're such a minimalist user in this space that the seven or eight, whatever that is, seven, seven parking spaces there is more than adequate for us. This will be housed with a maximum of two employees. If, if we have one customer in the showroom, somebody browsing or something, two maybe, I mean, that's like the extent of it. With the, the overhead door that's proposed for the, for the middle of the back of this building, that's, the purpose of that is just for us to get the vehicles in and out. It's not like it's a daily-use store. It's, and what's also interesting is Polestar only has really the one model, right? So we're not even going to be changing out models because they're still in the infancy of their, of their lineup for cars. It's going to be several years till they have, a couple of years till they have a next one, and then a few years till they have a third model. So we're essentially not going to have to take these vehicles in and out, certainly not on a daily basis, not even weekly. We'll be glad to plant the trees on the right-of-way as long as MDOT gives us approval for that. And then I guess, just want to mention, I have Elizabeth Marquisi today. She kind of runs Lag Development. And Max Muncy is LaFontaine's Director of Relations and Communications. So if we have any other specific business-related questions, but I think that's my, my summary.
All right. Are there questions for the petitioner from the, Mr. Cantina?
I just had a quick question about test drives. So I understand that, you know, the vehicles will be in there for people to view and kind of take a look at. You're not going to be necessarily shuttling vehicles in and out because of the model changeovers, but when customers come to view the vehicle, will they have an opportunity to test drive? And would that be one of the uses of that back door where that would be a concern, vehicles going in and out?
So Max Muncy here, pleasure. It's my first planning commission ever, so I picked a great evening to attend. To your question, so Polestar uses a third party to facilitate their test drives. They would prefer that they're scheduled at your home or work. Certainly, if a guest was in the, in the showroom and wanted to test drive a vehicle, they would have that option too. So generally, we would ask them, though, if they would prefer it to be brought to their house directly, then they're not leaving a vehicle at the showroom, and then they can actually experience the vehicle for 24, 48 hours or a long weekend. So to your question, there would be a chance that somebody would test drive directly out of facility, but out of, given case of every month that we have guests in, we're generally scheduling those at their home or work.
So to say that would be an exception, not the law?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, hold on. I have a follow-up then.
Yes, sir.
So where do, if you're going to have a test drive, do the vehicles that are going to get test drive come from this site or from Farmington Hills or somewhere else?
So we will have, our auxiliary lot for our inventory and stock is in Farmington Hills at an existing lot. The vehicle, we would most likely have one of the managers driving a demo vehicle, which would also serve as a test drive vehicle when the manager, salesperson, was on-site that day. We wouldn't be pulling a unit out of the showroom every time a test drive was occurred.
Okay. That was, that was my question. It sounded like, well, that's possible, you have a different system.
Correct.
So somebody who says, oh, I want to test drive this car, you say, okay, Tuesday at 2:00, we'll bring it to your house, and you take it from Farmington Hills.
Correct, yes. The exception would be the individual maybe was there from out of town, and they wanted correct right then to utilize the vehicle. We can make an exception to that. Polestar generally prefers as a brand, the experience is happening at the individual's home for that. And to my colleague Gary's point, they only have one current model in the lineup. It's a Polestar 2, so four-door hatchback sedan. There will be an SUV hopefully into early next year, but the usage of like multiple vehicles for a traditional automotive line is very minimal compared to what Polestar offers.
How many employees?
Two currently.
Okay, that's all, you only need two to man this site?
Yeah, they're, Polestar's entire model is very Teslesque, but using a local retailer to facilitate the community interaction. But yes, there would be a space manager and then one product or technology expert in the facility at a time. Everything transactional-wise is done online. So even, for instance, if, sir, you were in the showroom and you wanted to buy the car in the showroom, we're sending you to polestar.com to purchase the vehicle. We'll assist you in that. Polestar Detroit will never have a website, nor that, everything is facilitated through the actual parent company itself.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Clooster?
Yes, can you describe a little bit the use of room 104 labeled handover space? Sorry. The room with the door in question.
Yes, sorry, thank you. So the handover space is, is in, in theory, what would be our kind of show, showplace for one of the key vehicles. If the customer was out of state, or some have made the decision to fly, currently out of Farmington Hills, people will fly from out of state, pick up their vehicle, and then drive it home to experience it. So Polestar in all of their spaces have a handover space, but based on the averaging 35 units we've had, that, we don't have a handover space at the current facility. Everything has normally been delivered to the guest's home, but now that we're building a new building that currently operates out of our Volvo dealership, so we were somewhat handicapped on fulfilling all of Polestar's needs for the space, their requirement is what they call a handover space.
Would it be fair to classify this as the, the white glove experience? That's maybe the 5% of the, of the transactions versus the majority of the transactions?
Most of it is getting delivered to the individual's home or work, yes. For the off-case that the individual does take ownership at the facility, Polestar does require a, a special room to facilitate that transaction. Thank you.
And didn't you say appointments, right? Most customers are set up through appointments?
Most customers are going online to polestar.com, inquiring on the vehicle. Our team is reaching out to them and then booking appointments into the space. Based on where the location is off of Woodward, there's not necessarily a lot of foot traffic in that area, so we think actual showroom visits will be minimal versus traditionally we're seeing more appointment-based appointments to see the vehicles.
Mr. Cantina?
So in that rare occasion where a customer does take delivery of a vehicle in this space, in the handover space, that vehicle's going to need to be delivered from Polestar to this location. Can you just describe, is that coming on like a large carrier, or is it a single vehicle being delivered, single-car carrier? We, I think there was reference to it already being accepted that no vehicle deliveries or drop-offs would happen on the Woodward Avenue frontage or on the side street, which really only leaves you the alleyway. So if you could maybe just address that for a second in terms of understanding that it would be a rare occasion that a customer's taking delivery there, that vehicle's got to get there somehow, how does that vehicle get there?
To address that point, sir, so all vehicles delivered to us are delivered at our Farmington Hills location in our storage lot. The cars all have to go through what's called a PDI process, so a technician has to go through, sync the vehicle correctly, do some minor updates to the car when it's on-site. All of that PDI process and delivery will occur at the Farmington Hills location. A porter or a driver then would bring that sold unit to our space in Royal Oak for the final delivery part of it, but no transport truck or even single car hauler will be delivering vehicles, so everything will be sent to Farmington Hills.
Great. Thank you. Great, thank you.
I got another quick question. So if the car does have to come out of the back door there into the alley, there's a discussion about the mirrors, but, I mean, is that, you're really going to rely on that, I would think, what's the price point for these cars?
The Model Two starts at forty-nine thousand, goes to seventy-two. The Polestar One that, I guess in theory is an existing model, is a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. The Polestar Three coming out, which will be an SUV, will start at a six-figure price point.
Okay, and so you'll be displaying those vehicles at every, what I'm saying is, you pull them out in the alley, are you going to rely on the mirror? You're going to have one of the employees make sure there's nobody coming?
I would say we'll have a spotter also. There's quite a bit of technology in the vehicle that hopefully we can see as well too, but a spotter, again, with the minimal use of in and out, I think with a staff of two, somebody can easily stand in the alleyway, watch the individual pull out, and still be safe.
Other questions for the petitioner on the business use?
One comment to make, too, and Gary brought up, we are exclusive to the Midwest, so this is a destination. Polestar sought to be in the Royal Oak, Birmingham kind of central area for their position in the Midwest. They didn't choose Chicago or another one, so there are merits to the city that Polestar has selected on being this signature from the Midwest.
Other questions? Don't go away yet.
No. Yes, sir.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes, so just in, looking at the elevations that were submitted and then some of the images, the brick is labeled to remain. It appears that the intent is to paint that brick. Can you confirm or clarify what the intent is with the brick? Or is that just a generic?
So we were going to paint the brick, I'm sorry, we were going to, we were going to paint.
And please introduce yourself there.
Elizabeth Marchese, Leg Development. We were going to paint it at Polestar's request. The owner has requested us not to paint it, which is why the renderings now have a false wall and ACM on them, covering up the brick to meet Polestar's standards. Does that make sense?
Is the rendering is something we consider as an old version?
Rendering is the new version.
Rendering is new. Seeing the brick facade, so that's a false front that's put, so it protects the brick since we are renting the building, so we're not going to damage her landlord's building or the brick with painting.
Yeah, she didn't want the brick painted, she didn't want the copper, the gutters to go away, she wants to touch it.
White ACM proud of the brick.
Yes.
Exactly.
And actually, these renderings were sent from Polestar, we received yesterday, so this is the current version of the design.
Okay, that, another quick question. So that, currently, there's no tower there by the front door. That's going to be added? Or is it going to be added? Because your rendering doesn't show it, your plan on the, your elevation on the drawing seems to show a extension.
Originally, we were proposing to put a tower on the corner, and again, it was going to be a standalone building that was just attached to the building. That could be removed because she didn't want us to alter the face of it. But then when we couldn't paint the brick, Polestar wanted to just represent their image with the ACM. So we came up with a false wall system, where really the ACM will be mounted on a metal stud wall in front of that, which can be removed, so it's not a permanent change. And their rendering, they didn't extend the tower on the corner. I guess if that's their image, we'll propose the same.
Okay, so there will be a tower, there won't be a tower?
No, no higher than that.
Okay. The questions? All right, well, this is a special land use, so we have a public hearing. And so I'm going to ask you to have a seat and see if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on the issue of the Polestar dealership. Please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. So on this side of the table, this is the special land use part of it. We haven't gotten into the site plan yet. So that is, that is the question before us, approval of special land use. Is there further discussion amongst the commissioners for our attorney, our planning department, or the petitioners, or a motion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the special land use.
Second by Mr. Cantina. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to approve the special land use? All right, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote, and I guess I'm going to call, hearing just the sense of the tenor of the discussion, I'm going to just call for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously, special land use is approved. Now let's move on to the site plan.
Very briefly, you've granted permission for them to seek the variances from the ZBAs, so that's the first condition, is that those are received. You've indicated that lots sufficient in size and width and dimensions. You've also indicated that you're happy with landscaping, so all of those items, including the corner clearance setback and how they're addressing that, those are all the four items listed in the site plan. All the other items, five through nine, are standard contingencies in terms of compliance with building codes.
All right, that's all you got on the site plan?
That's all I got.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. Twink? Commissioner Douglas?
Do we want them to submit revised elevations?
They're going to have to in order to get permits, and so, yeah, no, that won't be an issue.
Okay.
It actually would be cleaner because I think the sign issue with the tower would have come up, where they wanted to place it above the roof, so that will be cleaner and easier administratively to deal with.
Okay. Often, we as a body are, talk about corner views, but I'm satisfied at this point that the access that they're going to have in and out of that garage is going to be sufficiently watched and looked over, that I'm not worried about the item number four, the corner vision setbacks. So I'm going to move approval of the site plan.
Is there a second? I'll second. Excuse me, that, sorry, that, Mr. Cantina, excuse me. All right, so the motion is to approve the site plan with the listed contingencies. Mr. Klooster?
So just looking for some clarification on how we are addressing the elevation issue compared to what was submitted with the application versus what we're, what we're seeing on the renderings now.
Well, technically, you're approving the elevation that was submitted. We can deal with a revision administratively. The only thing they're really changing is the material in the tower. Unless you have a problem with what's being shown, we would just deal with it administratively.
Okay, I more so would encourage that that is a better direction than what was submitted originally, so I think we're okay there.
Okay, I have some questions. I got to think about who I got to direct these to. First of all, the proposed trees in the right-of-way, is that even part of the site plan? Is it not their property?
Yes, you often see as part of every site plan, the impact of the right-of-way around it, everything from required streetscape installations and other things, so yes, it's part of the site plan.
And so do we, does the city require those plantings, or is that something offered by the petitioner that is not?
Generally speaking, the city asks for additional landscaping. As I indicated earlier, the, because it's owned by the Department of Transportation by the state, sometimes they object to what is shown.
Okay. Further questions here? I guess this is for the petitioner. I have some questions if I can bring them back up here. So what are your plans for the pole sign there?
The one that says? The existing sign that already is at the building, correct, sir?
Yeah, the pole sign. We would like to put a Polestar sign on that, but that, that would be done in a separate application.
Okay, that we intend to use it?
Yes, we would intend to, we'd tend to leave it. The owner didn't want it to go away.
Right, and you're leasing this, so.
Correct.
Sticking, does the sign comply, Tim?
We're simply indicated in that any signage has to comply.
Okay, just curious.
So whatever they propose, when they get to the building department, they're going to have to comply.
Okay.
You're not approving signage today other than saying every sign, all signs will comply, even those that are on the building.
Okay. There's two planters in the parking lot. What's your plans for those?
To add landscaping to those, those were existing planters, but we needed to add bushes and sod, correct?
Okay, so is that?
They're in need of some TLC.
What's that?
I said they're in need of a little TLC, yes.
Yes, that's what I wondered about. Is that on, is that on your landscaping plan?
Yes, it is.
Right there, here and...
Oh, I see in the, oh, here we go. It says existing sod area, and in the back, you're going to add a couple, and this existing sod area is going to have, what happened to it?
It gets plantings in there as well.
Okay.
They're indicated, and we've also added them closer to the entrance door, and then all those bushes along the side of the building. None of that's existing.
All right, right, right now, there's rocks there, and you're going to add some kind of plant there. All right, the parking lots kind of chewed up. Is there, you have any plans for that?
We will resurface it at least. I don't know if it's got potholes or the exact condition of it. We want to make it presentable for the, to represent the line of vehicles that are being shown there, so we'll want to make it nice.
All right, and right now, there's lights, I don't even know if they work, off the side of the building that are literally pointed horizontally. What are you going to do with those lights? Are you going to take them off? Are you going to do something more intelligent with the lighting?
Yeah, we would like to do a full cutoff fixture there, and again, we don't have exterior display, it's just for safety and security.
Okay, but what's there now is going away?
Yes, what's the violating lights that are there, yeah, we'll get rid of those. We'll do full cutoffs.
Okay, good. All right, those are my questions. Any other questions for the petitioner about the, Ms. Beiki?
I'll just make the classic comment. We don't have any ordinance to the effect, but if you could consider native Michigan plants rather than ornamental plants that are, if you can, it would be better for the environment.
Polestar would appreciate that as well. Their goal's a sustainable company and have a carbon negative, so yes, your comment about landscaping will be...
Oh, great, because they'll appreciate it. You can prove, you can say, look, Michigan native plant.
Perfect, thank you.
Is that a hand?
No.
Okay.
It is a hand, but it's not...
Okay, I have another question. Do most people who buy your cars, are they first-time EV buyers?
Yes. Well, the initial demand, I would say, was yes, first time. Certainly, we got a lot of interest from existing EV customers as well, too, specifically Tesla. Their business model aligns similar with Tesla, all using a local retailer, and then when you couple that with Polestar, is a derivative of Volvo, so when you add the safety and quality that Volvo represents, we have seen an uptick. But it's more new buyers getting interested in the product or benchmarking against their current EV. Not a clear line on, we're not conquesting other brands, but there are also new ones, new entrants into the market as well, too.
All right, one of the reasons I ask a question, is it, is there any reason to put a charging station in your lot?
Yes, yeah, we have them inside. We'd like to put a couple, at least for two, on the exterior.
Okay, is that part of the plan?
It was not recorded by Polestar.
No, but we would like to do it anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely part of the plan.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's see where we're at. We have a motion to approve the site plan, right? With the stated contingencies, and we have no additions or subtractions to the contingencies, correct? That's where we're at. All right, I'm going to do this the same way, just to the tenor that I'm seeing here. We'll just call for the vote to, for the, on the motion to approve the site plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.
So just so I'm clear on this, so we now go to zoning, right, for zoning variance for the number of parking?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks so much. Thanks for your consideration.
We appreciate it.
And we do like Tesla drivers to test drive to. I say you pull them.
They're pretty nice.
Good to have more electric car options nearby, yeah.
It's been an exciting brand.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it, have a good one.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is sign variance twenty-two dash zero four dash zero one for thirty-four oh one Rochester Road. This is Beard and Associates. Mr. Twink?
It is in sign area two. The petitioner did apply for a sign permit to reface the existing freestanding sign in front of the building along Rochester Road. The sign was determined to be too high in terms of being eighteen feet, six inches, with a sign area of approximately fifteen point two square feet. Maximum height of the sign allowed in sign area two, a freestanding sign, is sixteen feet with a sign area of forty-two square feet. The second variance issue is related to the sign does hang over the public right-of-way, which is a permitted, a prohibited type of sign. So you have two variance requests from the petitioner, one to grant a height waiver, and two to allow a prohibited-type sign that projects over the public right-of-way.
All right, any questions from Mr. Twink before we call for the petitioner? All right, seeing none, is the petitioner here? Please introduce yourself and tell us, tell us why you want the relief.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Myers. I am with Metro Signs and Lighting, one-one-four-four-four Colts Avenue in Warren. And just before you this evening, our client has come and asked for the ability to change the face. The existing sign that they have is very dated. The colors are not very attractive, and it's getting difficult to read. It's an older sign, it's fading a little bit, and we're just hoping to change that. Difficulty that they have there is particularly for southbound traffic. The adjacent building that's just to the north of this projects out farther. There's a little bit of a wall sign, but it's underneath the overhang of their building. It's almost completely illegible for southbound traffic. This is really the only means for somebody to see that before they would pass the building. And so it's a, it's a very small sign, and I think it's appropriate for scale and size for the building, and it's certainly something that's been there a long time. We're just hoping to modernize it a little bit.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner? I have a couple. Does Mr. Beard have a website?
Yes, he does.
Okay, and does he have walk-in clients, or is he mostly got a clientele and appointments?
That I'm not sure of.
All right. All right, are there other questions for the petitioner? Oh, Mr. Cantina?
The pole that the sign is on, are there any planned improvements or updates to that?
We don't have any at this time. If it's, if the board would like to see it, if it had to be painted, or, you know, there is a little bit of rust that is on the pole. We could certainly do that if that's something that the board would like to see.
All right, any other, is the petitioner? Is the petitioner planning on taking down any of the other signs? Because I was out there, and I'll tell you that in the 40, less than 40 feet along linear feet, there are six signs, only one of them being the pole sign. There are five signs on the building. I'm just wondering if that is something... I mean, he doesn't have a sign, a dearth of signs there. Are any of those signs coming down?
At this point, we don't have a plan to do that, but I would say that would be, once again, at the city's discretion.
All right. Are there any other plan or questions for the petitioner from the panel before we bring it back to the side? All right, you can, I suppose you can stay there. We might have a question for you, or you can have a seat, and I'll call you back up. Okay, discussion on this side. I don't know if anybody else went out there. I did go out there, and that's why I saw the signs there. And I also would say, this is just me popping off here, but yes, the pole is peeling, the paint is rusty, and it's got all those wires on it, and it also is attached to the building with a wire. So I just, in case you didn't see it.
So Mr. Twing? So a pole sign is permitted in this sign area?
Yes, a freestanding sign, yes.
But it has, this is two feet, too tall?
This is too tall, and it projects over the right-of-way.
And the Miners Den has a sign up the street a few hundred feet, a pole sign. It seems to be shorter, though.
So the petition is to allow the sign simply to be refaced. If we didn't approve, he could leave the sign there just like it is, right?
Right. Or it may be possible to simply slide it down if you grant one or the other, because you can grant one variance without granting the other.
Then there are two, because it's over the right-of-way and it's too tall.
Yes, so if you said it was okay to project over the right-of-way but wanted it lowered, it looks like it's mounted in a fashion. You could slide it down.
Well, okay.
Or place it.
Okay, people aren't being very chatty about this one, so I'm gonna chat some more. I... There's nothing else in the area that looks like this. Like I said, Miners Den has a pole sign. I don't know 100% its conformance. It's a much better-looking sign. This is very industrial-looking and not in a good way, as far as I'm concerned. I appreciate the fact that instead of just changing the sign, the petitioner came and went through the process, and that is something that we appreciate. But I am perplexed why the petitioner even wants to do that, because he not only has a bunch of signs, this one is unattractive, and I can't imagine an accountant, like in this guy's particular business, who's, you know, doing most of his business by walk-in, would think that's not necessary, but those are my thoughts. Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, so it's right there in our write-up is the criteria that we should review this under, and italics quotations there, whereby extraordinary or exceptional conditions of such property that the strict application of the regulations enacted would result in peculiar or exceptional practical difficulties. Basically, something has made it very difficult to comply with the ordinances. From my perspective and what I've heard this evening, I'm not seeing or hearing the extraordinary or exceptional conditions of this property that would require deviation from what the ordinance is a lot. So I am of the standpoint that I don't see why relief would be necessary in this instance. I am kind of driven to kind of stick with what we've done typically here as a body. When signs, non-conforming signs come before us is ask them to comply with the ordinance requirements.
All right. Is there a motion?
Is that a motion?
Why not? It's going so well tonight. Motion to deny the application for the sign variance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there further discussion or questions for the petitioner, or Mr. Twing, or our attorney? Or for each other? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I've said before, and I'll say it again, we only get one bite of the apple with bad signage, with signage that are not in good condition. I mean, if we let this go, it's gonna be there for another 25 years looking like it does. And so it's just, I support Mr. Klooster's effort entirely. It's important on us that we act on these issues when they come before us, because we're not gonna get another chance.
Any other comments? Okay, I am going to call for the vote, and once again, I'm gonna call for a voice vote. All those in favor of the... This is the motion to deny the petition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion to deny has passed. Go back to the drawing board there, and we, of course, we wish the best of luck to Mr. Beard.
Well, I guess the only thing is, he can't have a conforming sign. Any ground sign there would be non-conforming, because it would have to project over the right-of-way.
And I think that that is part of our decision-making, yes. I think we took that into account.
But he can't just leave it there as is, then?
I'm just gonna leave it at that. Myself, and this is not, I think it's, it's not in his best interest to leave it there. That's my thought. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, next issue. This is another sign variance. This is sign variance SB 220402. This is 214 East Fourth Street. Mr. Twing?
Yes, the petitioner is proposing to install wall signs on both the east facade as well as the west facade. What I will show in the picture up in front might be the easiest explanation. This is a picture of the current signage, and the petitioner is proposing to add this logo symbol signage below it on both facades. The signs themselves on the facade are compliant, but they have a non-conforming sign that is not compliant in the one that projects over the public right-of-way, and it sticks out too far. So the issue is with, the sign ordinance says, well, you have a non-conforming sign. You can't do others without addressing this. So the petition in front of you is a request for a variance to allow a non-conforming projecting blade sign on the north facade to remain, and that would be this sign.
So just to be clear, if it were not for the non-conforming sign, the petitioner wouldn't even have to show up because the signage would conform already?
Yes, it issued a permit.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, is the petitioner here? It looks like you are. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you want the relief.
Frank Flores, 2436 Anita Street, Warren, Michigan. That's my home. Address for the VFW is listed on here. First of all, I'd like to read what our purpose is all about for why we're doing this sign, first of all. Okay. For all the... Okay, let me see. Here we go. "We have 1.2 million members from the DAV. Was founded in 1920 by disabled veterans returning from World War I to represent the unique interest in 19... And in 1932, the DAV was congressionally chartered as an official voice of the nation's wartime disabled veterans. With our brave Americans leaving the battlefields of Iraq and Afghanistan, the DAV services and advocacy are as relevant and critical today as any time in our nation's history. Annually, the DAV represents more than 200,000 veterans and their dependents with a claims for benefits from the Department of Veterans Affairs and the Department of Defense. The DAV Volunteer Services Program operates a comprehensive network of volunteers who provide veterans free ride to and from VA medical facilities and improve care and morale for sick and disabled veterans. The DAV 1.2 members provide grassroots advocacy and service in communities nationwide, from educating lawmakers and the public and about important issues to support service and legislative to help disabled veterans. The DAV is there to promote its message in hope of all who have served and sacrificed." That's a notation on what we're all about. With me, I have the VFW representative, Jim Colts. He's the judge advocate in our terms lawyer, and he's also the past commander of the VFW. And I have one member here from the, also a representative from VFW and the DAV, Jerry Gorsky. And I have Eddie Sido, the contractor that's going to do our sign. We moved into, we moved into the Royal Oak facilities because we sold our building. You know, we were located in Berkeley. Reason why we left Berkeley is because of lack of parking space. We have approximately 642 members in my chapter, who are considered a South Oakland Chapter 19 Disabled American Vets, and we're from here in Royal Oak now. The VFW gave us the pleasure to have our meetings held over there once a month, which we annually have that on their, on our expense along with them. We also have about approximately 30 to 35 members that come there. They have the parking. They have a lot across the street, and they have plenty of room for us to go. So now that we found a home, we have moved three times. We originally started off in the city of Royal Oak on Leaftale. The building was way too big for our purposes, so we sold that and moved then into American Legion Hall in Berkeley. Well, it was just not too workable because of the halls that they ran out. So we went and rented a broader building with our sales at Berkeley, which we stayed there for almost approximately, I would say, six to eight years. I've been there 10 years with them. I'm a life member of the DAV, also along with American Legion and the VVA, which is Vietnam Vets. We decided to sell our building because we had a hall that we could not rent out, and with the pandemic that came upon us, we came in destitute of paying our bills. So without any hall rentals and any activities, we decided to move out, sell our building, and try to relocate it. Mr. Colts, Jim, offered us a hall with them, with their building there, and we, I took a standard procedure of looking at the building, walking around, and seeing if it was quite our needs. And it was, so he showed us the parking lot and told us what we got, so it worked out. We've been there already, been eight months, and our membership, our meetings have grown again. We had 15, 18 people. Now, with the new system, we got to contacting our members. We decided to look into making this a permanent place. We talked with the VFW representatives, and they said, yes, there should be no problem putting up a sign. We have people trying to locate us. In Berkeley, we had awning in front of the building, and on the awning, we put the big words, "disabled American vets" on there, veterans serving veterans. Now, people can find that building, but the idea is that they could not have a place to park, even our members that show up for our meetings. So this is why we decided to talk about, why not put a sign so people can see this? And we looked it over twice, and many, many times I looked into it, and I said, you know, I think we can go right underneath underneath their purpose of tacking their wiring system into us, so when they light up, we light up. Now, we did not know, my understanding, the sign in front of the building has been there how long, Jim?
Well, I've been a member of the pole sign for 45 years. Been there before that, so it was probably in the 50s when the building was built.
And we had, we looked at it, and we seen that, we thought, well, there's no way we can put up our emblem. This is the emblem we had in front of the building in Berkeley, which is too small. Now, the one that you see probably the specs of the, of the sign that we proposed that we want to put on. And so I researched this, and my thing is that we did not know that this would stop us from putting, why would that stop us from putting up a sign on each side of the building? So when they drive down on Fourth Street, they're able to see where the disabled American vets meet at or where they're located at, because we made all, we made all our signage, we sent our postcards to our members, you know, where we're located with the address and here and there. But I thought it'd be nice for us to, seeing that we're gonna be there permanent, more out permanent. We put something of this, illuminated, so it'd be nice for our veterans and people to, that likes to come in and see. We can help them, because that's our purpose. That's what the word means, DAV, disabled. We work with mostly a lot of disabled vets. We have them coming in in wheelchairs, walkers, canes, hearing problems, some blind, you know, so we're asking for that purpose, if we can bypass. I did receive summary of the ordinance here and there, and I'm not sure I saw anything on there saying about what was said about non-conforming because of a recent sign that up there. If you can see the sign the VFW has in front of the building, there is no way we can put a sign of that big for disabled American vets. So that's why we petitioned to put this up. I have Eddie here that's making our sign, and he can give you the specs or unless you see, unless it's on there already presented to you. So we're just asking for the purposes, so our veterans know where to locate us and when they need us.
All right, well, first of all, thank you for your service, you guys, too.
You are.
My first question, I know I'm buttoning, but so you're a tenant in the building, correct?
Yes.
And your landlord is?
The VFW.
So the VFW owns the building?
Right.
Okay. Aren't the Canadians in there, too?
No, the Canadians, I think, went to Berkeley, American Legion, I believe so.
Okay, but you're, so you're a tenant, and I got it, all right. All right, are there other questions for the petitioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
So you said you sent a postcard out to your members?
Yes.
So they know where they're going?
Right.
Is yours, is this the kind of, I mean, so if you're a moose or an elk, and you travel around the country, you can go to moose halls and elk's halls in other cities?
Right.
Is this true of the DAV? Do they, would somebody be coming here from Lansing or Chicago or whatever to come to your establishment?
Yes, yes. If they see the sign, though, that's what I'm saying. The postcard only contacts the members of our membership. But we have people actually call us saying that they would like to stop by and, well, besides donate crutches, wheelchairs here and there, and they said, where can we find you? When we moved out of the Berkeley building, we left our sign still, while the occupant that bought that kept the sign on the canopy up. We had people stop by over there, dropping stuff over to him that he did not know what was it for, so we had to take the canopy down, which we did. But this is a sign here, as you recall, on your venture out through the city, there's bins that used to be put out there for the disabled vets to collect clothes, furniture, whatever. Well, that went out the door. Our department took that, not took it out, it's just the idea is that the... Our department took that, not took it out, it's just the idea is the people rather take it right in directly to us. And this is, if they see the sign here, they says, well, donate it to the disabled vets. Commercials on TV advertise wounded warriors or, or the vets or this network to donate your car. If you want to donate the car, where are you going to go? You'll go to a place where you see the sign. This is, I guess I'm in the right spot. I know everybody says we got GPS here and there, but signs talk, signs do the talking. And this is not a used up sign. This is being made, we are paying whatever the cost is to make this up, exactly like this, nothing different on what we have here. So it's like, it's like a star leading the people to us if they need the help, you know. And we had people come in from Lansing, from Port Huron. We do have posts all throughout the area, but they also have signs. But in this, in this area, we were glad to come in your city here and advertise ourselves being here, and we need the help from a lot more vets that need the help here and there. And we do give them rides down to the Veterans Hospital down in Detroit.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Have you had conversations with the VFW Hall about removing their nonconforming blade sign on the front of the building?
We, Jim, do you want to answer that?
Well, well, when the sign was put up, it was conforming. And over the years, you guys decided to change it. And of course, it grandfathered in. And about, I think it was about three or four years ago, we had to get permission to put LED lights in there, you know, and you guys let us do that. We didn't take it down. All we did, take the panel off, replace all the electrical, and that cost us a few hundred dollars. But it's, it's a fixture in the city. It's been there since the building. Then that building was built in the 50s, you know.
Now, as you can see, the VFW signed the one of VFW. Now, they, they must have got the okay from the planning.
We did.
Up here, which of course, you're all new to the program now, newcomers, you know, but apparently they got the permission to do that with that sign up front. So what, what would be the problem of us just adding another sign, which is going to go underneath? I mean, you know, we were just, we sat there for almost two hours listening to people talking about nostalgia of old buildings and here and there and then, you know, and they have to keep their, their building, and they do, they do a lot of the charitable work too, along with us, you know. But my thing is that if the VFW was able to get their sign put up there on the walls on both sides, what's wrong with us? We're veterans too, you know, we're just different, we're different title.
And we picked up more members too. We got 28 new and reinstated members this year, and that's most we've had in years.
He's a dual member, Jerry, he's a dual member, I'm a dual member. I mean, most of us, you know, stay in all the programs that the veterans are, we're all here to help the veterans that needs it. And as I read this out, this was a proclamation that was given to the DAV back in, back in November 11, 2011 by Fred Doonhall, he wrote his name right on his name, state representative. This was given to us for the fine work that we have done. So we want to continue on, but we want to do it in this city too, to help out. And as you know, we were, we were involved a little bit of the memorial that you have, that you have relocated, and we're satisfied the way it is now. I mean, there's no qualms about it. The idea is it's still up there, it's still recognizing the veterans, so we can have our memorials there every year for our veterans on Veterans Day, Memorial Day, whenever, on Armed Forces Day, whenever it comes up first. So we are strong here. We are, we already made plans, we'll be marching in the Memorial Day Parade, the DAV the first time in many years. The American Legion here has numerous DAV members in the, in the program. So again, that's what we want to do, is let the people know where we're at, and they can foresee that, okay, there's two, there's two, there's, there's other buildings that have five signs of each program, of each organization, and this one here will have two. And it looks like we're going to be, we've been bouncing around from Royal Oak to Berkeley, and now we're back here to Royal Oak, and we get more out of the tent to stay and not make a move. If we make a move, I'll be dead by then. No, I won't say that. No, but I've.
Glad to have you, we're glad to have you. Okay, very good. I appreciate that. Is there a question for the petitioner, Mr. Twing, or for each other, or a motion? Ms. Beeky?
I just have a quick question, because I think I heard some clarifications. So as far as adding the second sign, that's completely okay. It's again, whether or not the blade sign can stay. Is that, is the mic correct? That's the variance.
I'm not sure I understood you. The variance is for this sign out here. It has nothing to do with these two walls.
Right, okay.
The variance is to allow this one hangs over the right away to continue.
Right, okay.
You can't put this one up while you have a nonconforming one that's there.
Right, unless we give them variance to keep it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. And then I just have one comment then. I guess, in my opinion, since just a few years ago where they were allowed to add lights, again, given the fact that the sign's been there since the building was there.
Not when I was on the committee.
No?
No.
Oh.
Commissioner Douglas.
Actually, we have done that. We did it with the United Methodist Church on Washington.
No, I mean, I mean this sign.
This sign.
Oh, this sign. Oh, I'm sorry.
They mentioned that they added lights to it. Anyway, again, I've been inclined, under these unusual circumstances, to allow the blade sign to stay, is my opinion.
Now, this sign will be lit, when that VFW sign lights up, ours will be connected to it, they will be lit up too at the same time, and it will look nice at nighttime when you drive by, looking for that place if you're going to a wedding or whatever, you know.
So, Mr. Curtis.
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead and.
I move to grant the variance.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Beeky. Discussion, Mr. Klooster.
I hate this, because I don't want to prevent you from putting up your sign, because your sign is not the issue here. But I don't know how I can, in good faith, tell the last petitioner that they need to meet the ordinance, because they haven't explained why they have to violate the ordinance, and then say, yes, you can have a variance in basically the same conditions.
I understand, but this, this is coming from a vote that our motion was made, that's, you know, that's your decision. He understood that, and I know he's going to go back to the drawing board. There's no drawing board for us, I, you know, I mean, there is, but it's hard for us to ask the VFW to take their nonconforming sign they're talking about. So we'll go by what you, your vote on, and you just got to remember, you know, us veterans served a lot, and we've done a lot, and we're trying to help the people as much as we can.
I, I, I hear you, and I appreciate your service and thank you for your service.
Well, we're trying to do.
Can I get an additional comment?
I don't know if Mr. Klooster's done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I am done. I just, I couldn't make a motion or a second.
Oh, I just wanted to make an additional comment, that I think there is a difference in the sense that, A, this is in the downtown, and I believe in downtown, we should have blade signs, and now we don't currently allow them, but I do think they're important. And I think, B, the clientele being a diverse clientele, including older people who may not use the internet like others do, like the people who do the accountants, et cetera, I think that should begin giving some consideration for we finding.
Okay, and I, oh, Commissioner Douglas.
My concern is that people, the sign, the, your round sign with all of the, let me back up. We as a sign commission cannot evaluate signs on what they say. We can only evaluate them on their size and their shape and their positioning. So I, I, I don't know what your sign says, but let me just say that. If somebody is trying to find you, I don't think this sign is going to answer that. I think the letters are too small, I think there's too much of a, of a picture blurring the image, and if, or me, you know, I would just make it say D-A-V, not the round logo thing. So there's just that.
I understand.
But I will, I will also say this, that if you tell people we're in the VFW Hall in Royal Oak, they're going to find the VFW sign. And so if you were to forego adding the DAV circle to this sign, the veteran, the VFW could keep their blade sign, and, and I do think people would continue to find you even if the DAV sign isn't there. And that's, I don't know what that means about how I'm going to vote, but that's my opinion.
Okay, I'm going to, we're going to, we're going to discuss here. If you, you have something you want to end?
Well, yeah, because the VFW has been there since 19, well, they've been in Royal Oak since 1929. We're going to be on our 100 year coming up in a few years. And everybody knows where the VFW was, I guess if they have a sign or not, but nobody knows the DAV came back to Royal Oak. And if the sign's there, then they say, well, there they are, you know, because if they're not in the phone book, you know, then there are not no GPS to tell you where they're at, you know.
I just want to comment, I want to bring up.
You know what, I don't want to cut you off, but we're, you know, just hold on a second. So are there any other comments here? Okay. I have a comment. Mr. Klooster says, I don't know how in good conscience I can allow this variance when the other one is the same. Well, I do, because it's not the same. The other sign was the subject of the improvement. This sign is the sign that's nonconforming. And quite frankly, I don't think we've ever had this issue come before. I think I've been on the, on the panel here since 2014 or 15, I remember anymore. I've never seen this exact set of facts. This is a very odd set of facts. The issue here, this is a tenant who moves into a building, wants to put up a sign, and because the ordinance, oh, I'm going to tell my landlord to take their sign down in order for me to have a sign. I don't think we've ever had that before. The nonconforming sign, and by the way, I just want to say for the record, one day we'll probably have a debate about that sign, because they'll want to improve it, and I'll want to get rid of it, and there'll be the same kind of, you know, discussion about nostalgia or whatever. Personally, I don't think it's a very attractive sign. Somebody else might have a different idea, I'd love to get rid of it, but in this circumstance, this petitioner is a tenant who had nothing to do with, with that sign being there. They didn't create this situation that caused the hardship. So I do think it is a different situation than the last petitioner, and I think there would be no shame in granting the petition.
That's why you're the attorney and not me.
All right, so that's why I cut you off there, because as a lawyer, sometimes you're going to say, okay, I'm, I'm going to, I shouldn't say anything else because I'm where I need to be.
I know, you're doing a good job as a lawyer. No, all I was going to say is putting that sign up there.
Okay, we, we're ready to vote here, I think. Okay. All right, are we ready to vote? Any other comments? Okay, I guess I want to make sure, this one's a little more controversial, so I'm going to do a roll call vote. We'll start with Ms. Beeky.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
No.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes, you have your variance, and I just hope those VFW guys are making plans for new signs someday.
Will do. Well, thank you much, thank you much.
And thank you for being best of last, saving, waiting so long to have a turn.
You had to stand in line a long time.
I just want to say, you could have been drinking at the bar for the past three hours and still, no, you might not have been in any condition to make your case.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. Thank you so much, and we hope to see you guys on the Memorial Day Parade next month. And we appreciate you for giving, supporting us, us veterans. Thank you, thank you much.
Okay, have a good night.
All right, the next order of business is election of officers, I believe. So we have six of us, we wanted to wait till there were seven. Mr. Twing, you have any comment about that?
No, I'll start it up to the board, whether you want to vote tonight, make nominations and vote.
We might never have seven again.
The world is run by those who show up.
You could have months and months of only six people.
Okay, so what is the sense of the panel? Do we want to move forward with this?
Yes, this has been on the, dragging since January.
I think there's enough of us here, we can move forward.
Okay, we will move forward. So the process here would be to.
Get nominations for chair and vice chair, you can do them separately or together, and once you have the nominations, close the nominations and then vote.
Okay, I think we should do it separately. So what do we do first?
Somebody needs to nominate someone for chair.
Okay, Ms. Beeky, I saw two hands there.
I nominate Gary Casada remain as chair for another year if he's willing.
All right, thank you. Does it need to be a second or anything?
No.
Nope, and then you just ask if there's any more nominations.
Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call for the voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm voting for myself, aye. Okay, so I remain the chair. Is there a nomination for vice chair? Commissioner Douglas?
Nominate, Mr. Klooster.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we're going to do the voice vote again for Mr. Klooster.
Did he accept the nomination?
I don't care if he did or not. I wasn't here when you made me vice chair. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Klooster, congratulations. I think I'm going to take off next month.
Well.
Okay, I think that's the end of the agenda. Is there anything else that the planning commissioners would like to put on the record or state at this time before we close, Ms. Beeky?
Just very briefly, I'd like to suggest that at some point, and I don't know where this should land, but Royal Oak, it would be important to consider our historic designations, our historic buildings. Again, in the context of economic development, resiliency, well-being, sustainability, and lots of other factors, I think our historic designations are weaker than they should be for maintaining some of the cultural amenities that we have. So I don't know where they would ever fall, but I think it's something important to consider.
Can, can I just ask that, is that something that is incorporated into a master planning more specifically than we have it? I mean, our master plan says, you know, preserve cultural, you know, institutions and historical place of interest, but is that something that gets or can get more detailed in the master plan than we had it before, or is that?
I think it can fall in the master plan or it could fall in historical ordinances, but you could look at a lot of communities, and again, Boulder, Colorado, San Francisco, George, Savannah, Georgia, just some designation of some buildings that, that we consider important to protect, whether it's a couple blocks of downtown, and again, in the case of Boulder, where I lived for a long time, those buildings might have even been renovated and maintained on their facades and their first floors that have second and third floor step ups behind them, but the historic nature of the street is maintained. And I just think Royal Oak would benefit, because one of our diversifying factors is the historical nature of some of our structures, and if we lose too many of them, we'll tip to a space that we can't get back from. And we see that, I'm from Saginaw, we see it there, we see it in Detroit, in Flint, you know, we have some remnants that help places come back, but if we lose too many of them, we won't be able to come back from it. And I think that's something to consider in a more formal way. But yes, it could be in the master plan, but typically I think it's also in a historic properties ordinance. Maybe form-based code could help too a bit.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Could you say that again? Because I missed it.
Form-based codes.
Form-based codes.
Oh, okay.
May help also.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or statements by the planning commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There better be.
I am so moved.
Here we all move to adjourn at the same time.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you all.